June 17. Welcome to the special meeting of the City Council of the City of San Juan Bautista, Tuesday, June 17th at 5:13. Regular meeting, sorry, because I closed session. Sorry. Thank you. The regular meeting. Because it says there right on the top of the page, Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Friel's. Can you please start us off?
(speaking Spanish)
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Here.
Councilmember Friel's?
Here.
Councilmember Morris Lopez? Mayor Protem Sabatia and Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Thank you. Do we have public comment on items that are on the closed session agenda?
No speaker cards received, Madam Mayor, and seeing no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. The city will now recess to a closed session pursuant to to a council, a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Orozco versus City of San Juan Bautista at all, and a conference with real property negotiations, 315 The Alameda, APN 002, 530, 031, Government Code Section 54956.8. We'll see you all at 6. Thank you. I haven't got a gavel today for the first time ever in my whole entire, I do. I don't. That was just awesome.
You know, that was like a, that's an ant. It's a relic.
It is.
A 150-year-old.
Ben Franklin used it.
C.C. Zanetta slam that thing for the first time.
There you go.
180 years ago.
Yeah, I did. You, you give me the words. Can you say that into the mi- Hi, welcome all to the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of San Juan Bautista. It is May 17th at 6:04. Welcome all. June 17. Thank you for that correction from the audience. I appreciate that. City Attorney, can you please take us out of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council and public. The City Council met in closed session on items 2A and B. Item 2A was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, the Orozco versus City of San Juan Bautista case, California Government Code Section 54956.9D1. The City Council heard from the City Attorney, and there's no reportable action on that item. And on item 2B, conference with legal counsel, real property negotiations, 315 The Alameda, Government Code Section 54956.8. The City Council also heard from the City Attorney on that item, and there will be a public discussion or it's, the matter's on for consent, and there's no, no reportable action on that either.
Thank you. Question for the council. We'd like to add two items to the consent agenda, the creation of a building official and job description and the creation of the permit tech and a job description. May I have a motion to add these to the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mayor Protem Sabatia, seconded by Councilmember Friel's. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Friel's?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez? Mayor Protem Sabatia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We have a proclamation. Is Piper Shankle in the house? Hi, come on up. Welcome. Do me a favor, please. There's a big button on that. If you can press it, thanks. And please, please sit by. This is in recognition of Piper Shankle, who is the first Eagle Scout in, which are you in?
2428.
2428?
2428.
Awesome. Whereas the City of San Juan Bautista recognizes the importance of civic duty, leadership and service to the community and values the exceptional achievements of its youth. And whereas Piper, a distinguished resident of San Juan Bautista and recent graduate from Anzar High School, has demonstrated remarkable dedication and perseverance in achieving the highest rank of Scouts of the Scouts BSA program, Eagle Scout. And whereas Piper is the first female in San Benito County to attain the rank of Eagle Scout, marking a historic, I have chills, sorry, marking a historic milestone in the advancement of gender equality in scouting and serving as an inspiring role model for young people across the region. And whereas her Eagle Scout service project, Piper undertook the rehabilitation of a section of Aroma school grounds, transforming it into a vibrant and functional space for a community garden, thereby contributing to the beautification, sustainability and enrichment of the community. And whereas her initiative not only reflects her personal commitment to service, but has left a lasting positive impact on the students, staff and families of Aroma San Juan area and beyond. And whereas the City Council extends its heartfelt congratulations to Piper for her exceptional leadership, perseverance and service, and joins with troop and PAC members, family, friends and the broader community in recognizing her outstanding accomplishment. Be it further proclaimed that Monday, June 28th, 2025, I'm sorry, July 28th, 2025, the date of her Eagle Scout Court of Honor shall be recognized in the City of San Juan Bautista as a day to celebrate and commend her exemplary service. Now therefore, I, Leslie Q. Jordan of the City Council of the City of San Juan Bautista, do hereby honor Piper, and the City Council hereby honors Piper Shankle for her achieving the rank of Eagle Scout and extends its sincere appreciation for her contributions to the community and the values of scouting. Piper, if you want to say anything, the microphone is all yours. Only if you want to. Awesome. Thank you very much. Couldn't be prouder. Presentations, State Park Trees Update, Wes Gray. Hi, Wes, welcome.
Hello. I'm Wes Gray, the Sector Superintendent of the Diablo Range District, which includes San Juan Bautista State Historic Park. I was here a few months ago and presented a state park project where we were removing five trees from the park. I could update since then. All the, the project has been completed. The trees have been removed from the Heritage Garden and the Castro Breen Plaza Hotel area. And we're, have worked well underway to replant the garden with a different species of flowering plants. On Wednesday, the, a group of five to 10 local master gardener volunteers were out there, and the garden's looking pretty good. State Parks is undergoing replacing the border fence.
I'm sorry, Wes, can you hold on, please? Guys, can we please be polite and, and listen to the speaker? Thank you. Sorry, Wes, go on.
And yeah, so the, the fence is underway. State Park should be wrapping that up in the next couple of weeks. And, and it's always ongoing maintenance of weeding and improving the orchard and the garden area. Why, we just recently planted some more Mission grapes in the orchard and have a really great partnership with the master gardeners. They're out there every Wednesday volunteering. But I'm mostly just here to answer any questions from the City Council or the, or the public because previously I wasn't able to answer. It wasn't on the agenda, so.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the update. Questions, comments, concerns from the council? Councilmember Aranda?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Friel's?
Thank you. We met with the State Parks and now I've just forgot his name. I believe he was the gentleman oversees this whole region through here. He said from, gosh, the, the East Bay all the way down to here, and I forget the man's name. But a few of the questions I had for him was when, how, how far along is the state going to let the Plaza Hotel fall into disrepair? It's collapsing. I'm just curious if you've heard anything about repairing that before it falls on somebody or just gets to the point where its history's lost?
Are you talking about the Zeneta?
The Zeneta.
Yeah, the Zeneta. We do have funding. We have a National Park Grant to provide $600,000 of deferred maintenance. And our number one priority is to replace the roof. And that is funded and scoped where, you know, the wheels are turning on putting that out to bid later on this year. And we have a project underway to the, probably referring to specifically the outside of the decking, which is totally dilapidated and falling apart. I hope to by later this year to have the rotten wood removed and at least have it stabilized. So we're, we're working on it. But yeah, I, I agree. It's in a poor condition right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sabatia?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment in chambers or on Zoom land?
Michael Poncy?
Thank you. Wes, if you can just step aside for a moment so Mr. Poncy can come up and make public comment?
Yes, Michael Poncy, 803 First Street. I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak to somebody here from the State Park. I know that they're working on the corner lot, removing the trees and rehabili- rehabilitating that area. But I would like to ask the State Park if they would concentrate on weed abatement management around their property, especially on Third Street, Washington Street, Mariposa Street. I, I believe that it has been neglected. I'm hoping for projects to help beautify the downtown. And if the State Park can routinely maintain the weeds, at one point earlier, the weeds were almost three feet tall. San Juan is, is trying to maintain the historic downtown as a purpose to draw visitors in, to welcome visitors in, to hopefully have visitors return. Our li- our livelihood depends on it. So if the State Park can work with the city to make sure that that ma- maintenance is routinely done, I would appreciate it and I'm sure the city would. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Rodriguez, you have three minutes. Welcome, David.
Yes, yeah, thank you. I'd like to echo what Mr. Poncy just mentioned and like to double down on it. It would be great. Just, I hope, not to throw all the, you know, too much negative energy at this, but yeah, I agree that the weeds and weed abatement needs to be addressed. And I do appreciate the state fixing up the, that corner lot and replacing those trees, even though maybe a bit of a better way to communicate that. But Wes, I appreciate it, all the work that you've done on that. And also to go add further to what Mr. Poncy said is in, in forming a partnership, is maybe there should be, since Wes has the, the resources to beautify the, that his areas, maybe the, the city might actually solicit Wes's expertise and resources in doing maybe other parts of the city, because really if there isn't a, a major effort to engage in what we have, and that is to bring in visitors, which then supports all the businesses and surrounding businesses, then it's really going to be tough to solicit new businesses to start. And specifically me as an example, I would love to start a business, but I don't think there's a, as it relates to all the surrounding, like State Parks and, and the Mission, it, it makes it really hard to, to find any value to start a business if there aren't any tourists. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Back to the council. I'm sorry, we, didn't we have any others?
Nobody else on Zoom and no other speaker cards received, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Aranda?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Friel's?
I'm just going to piggyback on Mr. Poncy. California Public Resource Code 4291 states that 100-foot of defensible space has to be around buildings in a vegetation area. And it looks like the state of California doesn't want to follow their own laws. It's, it's a little frustrating, but thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sabatia?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Wes, for, for bringing us up to date. We appreciate it. San Juan School Construction Project. Superintendent Barb Dilvarga not here, moving right along? No. Public comment, public comments are generally limited to three minutes on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have public comment?
Bob Quaid, you have three minutes?
Thank you. And, and just for everyone's edification, this is public comment, not a Q and A. Thank you. All yours. Bob, welcome. Quaid, Bob, Bob Quaid, welcome.
The, the mic, please, can you turn it on? Thank you.
Thank you. This is public comment?
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
So I just want to comment on the nonprofits and doing events in town. The city is starting to charge fees for events in town. It's going to drive nonprofits not to be able to do events in town because the costs are so high. Right now, San Juan Day, the Spirit of San Juan, it looks like we're not going to do San Juan Day because the cost is too high. Last year, it cost us $3,400 in city fees. And we can't afford it. The, the Rotary had Rainbow Run a couple of weeks ago. And we haven't got, I don't know if we got the bill last, as of Thursday last week, we hadn't gotten the bill for the city fees for the Rainbow Run. But before we got the bill for the Rainbow, our profit was $1,800. If the city fees are anywhere near what they charged the Spirit of San Juan last year, we're going to lose money. So these events bring, bring tourists into town and help support the community. So if we drive away these special events, the city's going to lose money. So I think the city needs to reevaluate what we're charging. As far as like this Rotary Club, when we did the flea market in town, we used to set up the barriers ourselves. And I know you may say, okay, well, we can't have volunteers doing work. But there is a volunteer program in town. I was just with the San Juan Service Club. A couple of weeks ago, we helped the city put the flagpole up and we signed a waiver that volunteers. So you can work out a program where volunteers can put out the barriers and stuff and, you know, limit the liability to cities. So we have to work with the different nonprofits in town so they can do these events at a reasonable cost so we can continue to do them and to help bring tourists in town. So I think, you know, in the short run, yeah, you may be making a little bit of money for the city by charging these fees. But in the long run, you're going to lose a lot of money because we're not going to be able to have these events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Helena Clint Smith?
Hi, welcome. Thank you. Helena Clint Smith, Fool's Gold Antiques. My three minutes concern San Juan Day, Sunday, August 10th, 2025. This is a legacy show. Do you know that 60 years ago, it started as California's first outdoor antique flea market? Generations of people have not forgotten that and still come here every year to support an event that benefits our entire city base, including merchants who can put their own booths in front of their own businesses to promote a variety of goods and services, especially including antiques and collectibles. Citywide garage sales that unite our neighborhoods, adding to the day of fun and shopping and serving to highlight the varied selection of real estate, old and new. Numerous nonprofits, as we've just heard, who have booths or hold events to fundraise for their organizations. The State Historic Park, who has deferred early days to San Juan Day and as a result significantly increased their visitorship to their fun and historic event. The VFW Parking Lot Sale, whose vendors also see day-long Target Market shoppers seeking collectibles and antiques. The church and school parking lots, which provide a necessary service for a small fee, enabling them to fundraise. In the spirit of San Juan, you have the wherewithal, you have the wherewithal to ensure this event happens for its 61st annual year. I'm one of many who have already been proding, promoting San Juan Day since last year. Shoppers are going to show up expecting booths on the street, garage sales, early days and downtown activities with food and fun for all ages. This is an entirely volunteer effort committed to by people who love San Juan Bautista and want to see it continue as a destination for travelers and shoppers. Please keep this legacy alive through your own unique capacity to waive garage sale fees for the day and release the line item nonprofit funding that enables closing the streets to parking and instead opening them to the major foot traffic we need and expect to see generated on San Juan Day. Thank you very much for your valued attention.
Thank you. Francesca Donati?
Hi, welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
Good.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Francesca Donati. I'm from Hollister, California. I'm excited and honored to be Miss San Benito Rodeo 2025. I'm here tonight to invite you all to some of the Saddle Horse Show's upcoming events. We're going to start off strong with the Saddle Horse Downtown Parade on June 21st at 11:00 a.m. That's this Saturday. June 22nd is a busy but fun-filled day, starting with the Figure Eight roping, an event you will only find in San Benito County, and we'll have our eliminations at 8:00 a.m. And then the jackpot roping at 11:00 a.m., followed by our membership barbecue lunch at 1:30 p.m. You can purchase tickets for the barbecue at the Horse Show office at the Lotto Park or at the barbecue. For all nights of our show, you can purchase tickets online on our website. The Saddle Horse Show Museum encases a rich history and display of our horse show traditions, and I would really encourage you to check it out for free while you're at the Horse Show throughout the weekend. The Western Art and Equipment Show features booths where you're able to purchase art, jewelry, tack and other unique items. And will be open on Friday at 4:00 p.m. and Saturday and Sunday at 11:00 a.m. The Horse Show in Rodeo will be on June 27th through 29th. On Friday, June 27th, there will be wine and beer tasting at 4:30, followed by the Rodeo at 6:30 p.m. Our theme for that night is Public Safety Night, to honor all of our local heroes. Saturday, our theme is Patriotic Day, to honor our flag, our active service members and our veterans. The Halter Horse classes will start at, start at 8:00 a.m., followed by our Saddle Horse Show Special Rodeo at 10:00 a.m. The show starts at 1:30 p.m. That night, doors will open for our annual cowboy barbecue dinner dance and auction at 5:00 p.m. You can purchase tickets at the Saddle Horse office or from a director. On June 28th, the show will start at 1:30 p.m. Our theme for the day is Heritage Day, to celebrate all our different cultures at the Rodeo. If you have any questions or for more information, please visit our website or stop by the Saddle Horse Show office at the Lotto Park. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you very much for that. Are, are we working on camera angle back there? I'm sorry. Thank you, Francesca. Are we working on the camera angle? Thank you.
Linda Ginn?
I'm sorry. One more time with the name?
Linda Ginn?
Thank you. Hi, Linda, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I was here a couple of months ago. I have a business on Block 4, 402, 8th Street. I have vintage rose antiques and collectibles. I'm on my 10th year. And we have got some support, a, a lot of concerned business people about how slow it has been. I think that we need to put our head together, the city and the merchants, to see if we can't bring more traffic here. Couple of other things. Mike always goes before me. The weeds have come back. I wish we could get on a weekly program. I try to pull all my weeds on my street. And also I'd like City Council to finally address the empty buildings that are on Third Street. The two buildings next to me have been closed for almost five years. I've talked to other people from small towns and they have an ordinance that they passed where they only can be vacant for six months, and then they have to fill them with a business. So that's something I wish you guys would look into. And I think that we do have one promoter, but I think we need another promoter because he only does two things at this time. And I think it's really important, and I think most of the vendors would agree with the merchants, business women, whatever you want to call them, that we need something big every single month. People want, need to have San Juan Bautista become a destination again. Traffic has dropped probably 50 to 60% in the last year and a half. Okay? I'm going to say some numbers. I used to make $1,500 to $3,000 every single month. This month, I'm at $175. Okay, my overhead is $850. This is not the first slow month I've had. I've had many in the last year. Last month was $554. That doesn't even cover my rent. So we need to do something. I've talked to a lot of merchants. I'm not the only one. We're here. We're crying out for help from our city council. Also, I've already seen four cars go the wrong way at the end of Street Number 4, our block. We may have to put the two barrels back because they don't see the signs. And we yell at them to stop, but I just don't want anybody to get hurt. They figure it out and they're embarrassed. So now, the biggest one. I have been asking for years and I got the cooperation of Dawn, finally, for five years, and I miss Dawn. I have always had an issue and I fought for every vendor here to get a sidewalk, a walkway, excuse me, a walkway when they have these buildings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Michael Poncy?
Hi, Michael, welcome.
Hello, Michael Poncy, 803 First Street. I come to you tonight in a different capacity as a volunteer. as a volunteer for the Junior Giants Baseball Summer Program here in San Juan. I'd like to invite City Manager Ashley Collett and the entire council to our open ceremony this Saturday, eight AM at the ballpark. A little history about our program here. It is approximately about eight years old, and for the last eight years, we were a sub-league of the Hollister Junior Giants Program. Had great cooperation with collaboration. For the last few years, we've been thinking about trying to do a league on our own, and we finally decided this year to try it. Hats off to Caitlin Brady, our city rec coordinator. She's been working very hard to get this done along with longtime volunteers Joanna Morales and Elizabeth Beth and Elizabeth Welch and myself have been putting our heads together, and I think it's going to happen. I think it's going to be a success. The San Francisco Totus, if you want to start a new league, that they requested a minimum of a hundred and twenty kids in the program. Over the years, we averaged about a hundred and ten, so we said we should be able to do that. When registration opened, I believe in April, it was really slow, and we were kind of in a panic. But I'm glad to say today, as of Friday, we have a hundred and thirty-eight kids signed up for our program, and the program is going to work.
I'm sorry.
Hundred thirty-eight, hundred thirty-eight. So again, I'd just like to invite everybody and the public to come out this Saturday, eight AM, the short, sweet, simple opening ceremony. But the kids have a great time, and I think you will too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Helena Walton?
Hi, welcome. Is, is your light lit? Yeah, just press the button. Again, green.
There we go.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable members of our San Juan Batista City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Helena Walton. I'm a local business owner. I'm here representing some other local business owners, and they might get up themselves. I'm just here to state that we're at a critical juncture, and I want to share practical solutions that can help our economic challenges into opportunities for growth. Our community's charm and historic history are assets, but to truly thrive, we need targeted strategies. Here are some solutions that I came up with that make a real difference. I'm looking and I'm asking, and this will be submitted to you formally in an email, for us to install billboards along the freeway in two strategic locations to attract passing travelers. Benefits increase visibility, will bring more visitors into town, boosting sales and shapes for shops, restaurants, and services. Develop a local marketing website with prominent links to all businesses and categories. Benefits makes it easy for visitors to discover and support our local economy, increasing foot traffic and sales. Partner with Visit California and other tourism campaigns to promote San Juan Batista as an authentic must-visit destination. Benefits expands our reach, attracts tourism from outside the area, and creates a year-round business opportunities. Engage in local influencers and social media campaigns to showcase our town's unique charm. Benefits builds community, pride attracts younger demographics, and increase overall visitation. The benefits for implementing these solutions are clear: increased foot traffic and sales for local businesses, more jobs and economic stability, enhanced community pride and vibrancy, and a sustainable, resilient local economy. I also want to say quickly, thank you, everyone who supported our local farmers market. It's every Sunday from eleven to three PM. Up until November the second, we have local produce being offered in some local vendors, so I'm excited about that. This is our way of just trying to attract other people, but we got to get the word out to whoever you know, neighbors, so they can come support what we're doing locally to benefit the community. I think together with the support, we can create a thriving business environment, one that benefits merchants, restaurants, and residents alike. Let's work together to make San Juan Batista a destination for all for the right reasons. Thank you for your leadership and commitment to our community's future.
Thank you.
And we have one hand raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Welcome, David. David, you have three minutes.
Thank you. And thank you to Mr. Ponce. He does a lot for this city, and it's really admirable to see it. I mean, he's in everything, and I like to see him, like to see that engagement, so definitely I appreciate his work. So a few things, and that's kind of piggybacking along with some of the comments, is the permits being too high, unable to bring in some events that would actually engage the surrounding communities, to include our own community, is really counterproductive because I think it seems as though that this is going to, I think the city council is going to have to double down on curbing those fees to where they're nil, and maybe reducing the cost on some other items and just kind of doing a full audit, because it sounds really ridiculous that, that you can't have a nonprofit do an event. And that goes along with the weed abatement. I mean, if you're not, those are where your fees should go. And again, that probably lies within code enforcement, and I live on Church Street. I see code enforcement up and down the street all the time. And I even asked, why aren't we addressing those weeds? Because that's where your fees should go. So does that all make sense? And why are we focused on Church Street when you have downtown Third that should be, that's our front yard? And if our front yard looks like crap, then we're not going to have anyone come and visit us. And so we really need to double down on that, and I, we think that, a few things. Baseball, the eighth, I think, everyone, City Council, City Manager, you know, get the word out, get your family to come, really show your support for them because it's really admirable what they're doing. And also to the Sunday Farmers Market. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more. Christina Hastings? Hi, Christina, welcome.
Hi, my name is Christina Hastings. I am a business owner on Third Street called Liz Blends. I had a customer in. She was a, her and her dad come in, not from California. I asked them if they've visited San Juan before, and they said, this is our first time here. And I said, well, welcome. I said, hopefully you can have enough time to walk around, enjoy the city, and walk and look at the QR codes, and she said, it feels like I entered a time warp. And I was, I was like, yeah, you know, let's, let's go on that. Let's open up the buildings. Let's get them running again. Let's get them some occupancy so they can walk in through the buildings and, and go through the time warp of what was here. And we have too many empty buildings, and we need to do something about it. We need to get them filled and safe for people to be able to enter. So that's, that's my comment. I think more people that see the buildings are open, businesses are open, the more we're going to get the foot traffic. You know, events are great, but we have, we have what it takes in order to get the foot traffic here. We just got to open up the buildings for them to have them safe and being able to shop, do what they want to do, walk around safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your, all your public comments. We are now on to public hearings. Community Facilities District, twenty eighteen dash one, Copper Leaf and Rancho Vista Neighborhoods Annual Levy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Gabby Mack, and I'm here on behalf of Engineering Department to request your approval of the resolution to establish a levy assessments for our city's assessment district for the upcoming fiscal year. As you know, these assessment districts are a key tool to fund localized services and improvement that directly benefits specific properties. We've completed the annual review required under the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two, including preparation of the engineer's report, which outlines the method of apportionment and details the benefits to each parcel. The proposed assessments are consistent with prior years and are necessary to continue maintaining service levels and community centers within each district. The assessment is increased by CPI or two percent, whichever is greater. This was established at the formation of the district. And in this case, for the Community Facilities District, it is at two percent for the year. We respectfully request your approval of this resolution so that we may proceed with levying the assessment and ensure uninterrupted service and upkeep in the upcoming year. Thank you for your time and continued support. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Gabby. Questions, comments, concerns from the council? Councilmember Aranda?
For me, it's just have, have the community members in those subdivisions, have, have they met? Do those members know that there's, it looks like, I think there's an increase on the fees. Am I correct for Zone Two? What I'm reading there right now. Apologies.
Gabby, can you tell us one more time what the increase is?
For Copper Leaf, for Copper Leaf and Rancho Vista, it will be two percent from last year's assessment. So for this year, for Copper Leaf, it will be seven hundred and four. And for Rancho Vista, it will be eight hundred and forty, and that's for the year.
And, and those community members, have they, they received a letter? Have they met? I know they're supposed to have their own meetings to talk about it rather than just passing it.
So last month during the council meeting, we had the oh, what's it called? The other meetings.
Intent.
Thank you, Mr. Doug. The intent meeting.
Got it. Other than that, I don't have any other questions or comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to apologize to the audience and my fellow council members. I left Gilroy at five twenty, and I was stuck on Highway one oh one South. It was gridlocked. There was a single car accident or something, but anyway, apologies for being late. Anyway, I do have a comment, and I'm going to refer this to our city attorney, John Giffen. So, Mr. Giffen, we have two council members, our pro temp mayor and councilmember Aranda, that both live in the Melrose Districts. Does that preclude them from taking any kind of comment or vote on these two issues tonight?
I don't think there, there is a vote tonight. I think it's a first reading.
What about comments? Because they both live in the district of Rancho Vista.
They're precluded from commenting, but they can't take action.
Okay, I was under the understanding that they could not even comment on the issues because there's a financial issue where they are. This is something that does affect them financially, and I'm just trying to follow process. Can you check into that?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. So my question is that I noticed on the page two of the document, it says that there is an increase based on, I believe, formulations based on urban zone, whatnot on the first page, but also on the second page, there is a slight increase. But I noticed that with Rancho Vista, they're in a deficit. Can you explain why they're in a deficit? Negative reserve balance. Can you explain that to us?
Certainly. I think there was a project that was that came about with the fencing that had to be replaced. And every year.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. There was fencing that needed to be replaced. So that was the, that had happened this year. So that went into the deficit.
So then who is taking the deficit? Is that the city's general fund, or is that going to come from the property owners? The cost of that repair?
Well, it went from the, I believe it went from the general fund, but with this coming year, with this new fiscal year, we will be putting a portion of the money towards that and then towards for more balance.
So when you say we will be putting, sorry.
Let me, the district.
I just want to get Jerry, Jerry Sanguinetti, our engineer, worked on this last year. So Jerry, excuse me, Jerry, if you have anything to add on, on Councilmember Morris Lopez's last question about the deficit?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Lopez. So if you recall, when we had the flooding that occurred back in twenty-three, twenty-three, we lost the Upper Retention Pond Fence. It collapsed over by Jim West Park. That fencing had, needed to be replaced. That fencing was, had already been accepted by the city prior to that, prior to the flooding. And so in typical fashion with Melrose or CFD districts, the, the reserve funding that exists in that, in that district is used to pay for any kind of repairs related to infrastructure in that district. So that's where you see the deficit. They had a reserve, and then that fence needed to be modified, engineered, and repaired so that we didn't have a problem happen again if we had any other kind of flooding incident. And so now you have a new, a newly designed fence that replaced the existing one that failed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian?
Yep. So following up on the comment, so in years past, when this issue came up of, this be Jose's first year, but myself voting on the two special districts because I stand to gain less than two thousand dollars or be impacted less than two thousand dollars, which is what is stipulated by the, how many Ps are in it?
FPPC.
That one. I was going to add an extra one. The FPPC. That doesn't, I haven't been required to recuse myself from voting on this. And so hopefully the fees stay below that, and they have been. But when, when they reach that, that threshold, I'll gladly recuse myself, but they, they're even with the maximum levy that it could be proposed. We're still shy of that by six hundred and sixty-five dollars-ish. And then I wanted to thank Jerry for, you and Dawn had worked on that fencing thing. I do remember that I have looked at with my expert eye, the new fence design. It looks like it might work. And for those who aren't familiar with it, the fence actually will pivot out of the way instead of being pivoted by the floods. And then hopefully that's, that's better. It looks like a pretty solid design. It's a shame we didn't have Mary to do that in the, in the first place, but the reserves acted as, as they were, right? Like, that's in a special district within the city, there are certain funds set aside and paid into to make sure that repairs like this, repairs to the street are being able to taken, taken care of, and, you know. Kudos to whoever was, was predicting those funds. They were only short by just shy of three hundred and twenty bucks. It's a pretty good estimate in my. Yep, good job, Jerry. And so they, they did what they were supposed, supposed to do. And so they did what they were supposed, supposed to do. In years past, Dawn had met with, he called special meetings with the two, three districts. I know we have things on the agenda and whatnot, but he had called meetings with the special districts to kind of go over things in person, give people more information. It's, you know, it's, this is maybe 10 times more people than we usually have in here. Just so that the people were aware. Most people, you know, it's, it's hard to get people to pay attention to things, but I think that's what councilmember Aranda was referring to. Sending out mailers and, and having meetings with those residents so they were aware of like, hey, reminding you again, here's the bounds, here's what things were for, and then sharing out the budget on those things, which was always very nice and it kept people super informed. And the more informed community we have, the better. So if we, if, maybe we do that again, even if it is just a mailer so that we understand, you know, especially to celebrate the whole part of like, we asked for a reserve, it was paid for and it came in handy, we used it. And just, you know, what the budget is, what the increases are. I know there's, I mean, every year there's going to be, you know, there's inflation and whatnot, so probably the landscaping went up, has to get re, give me a word, what's the word? Bid, rebid every so often. You know, just making, making people aware of that probably go a long way towards greasing people and goodwill, having people understand why they're paying more every year. That's all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to now open it, open the public hearing. That was a first, sorry, that was fun. Do we have any public comments?
No speaker cards received for the public hearing and chambers, but I do have one hand raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Hi David, welcome.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to commend those people that have received that fence pretty close to that budget and also I want to really go back to, I know it's not on the, part of the agenda, but kind of in line with this, with the fence and the flood zones, but to maybe enhance maybe some of the spending, maybe we should have some sort of, I'd be happy to discuss this further, like on a Thursday afternoon for dinner. So I invite the, the city council to pull me and we have a dinner to discuss some of these matters. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
No other public comment, Madam Mayor.
Public hearing is closed. Back to the council, any further comments? Councilmember Aranda?
No, no, no questions or comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes, in reference to Pro Tem Mayor's statement with the fair political, what is it?
FPPC.
If we could just get in our record, the statement that he's declaring, that would be, I think, just, you know, good to have on record if that is the case. If you can maybe go after that document and just have it as far as that, you know.
Certainly.
Yeah. And then also I have a question. What if an individual owns more than one property in the district? Is that?
There is, there is that $2,000 limit is a, an occasional amount that could potentially disqualify. But I've just been doing a little research while we're sitting here.
Right.
And it's, it's not absolutely clear. I mean, it could be less than 2,000 as well. So I think we're probably safer to not, to anybody who owns any property in the affected district should not comment or vote.
That's what I agree. That's what I, that my, my impression of that is. But if you own more than one property, then that would award you more monetary award, correct, or benefit?
Same rule, same rule would apply.
Logically thinking, that would, that would double your benefit.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia?
Still listening to this. No more comments.
Thank you very much. I have no comments. Thank you. Thank you Gabby. Thanks Jerry. Can I have a motion to, is this a first reading or is this an approval?
No, it's a, it's a public hearing for a levy, so it's a resolution. It's not an ordinance. So we have to take action to approve the, the resolution.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve a resolution levying the annual special tax for the Community Facilities District number 2018-01 for fiscal year 2025-26?
Without, without the voting, voter, voting of those affected.
Without, this is for Rancho Vista and Copperleaf, so without a vote from councilmember Aranda and a vote from Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia. So may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Motion made by councilmember Freel, seconded by councilmember Morris Lopez. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Abstain or?
Abstain. Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia? Abstain.
I don't even think that's a vote. I don't, sorry, did you call me yet?
Mayor Jordan.
Yes, thank you.
Someone spoke for me.
Okay, are you going to abstain yourself?
I'll abstain, but on the record that don't appreciate people speaking for me.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification. Or, thank you. Valley Vista Landscape and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District, number one for fiscal year 2025-26.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers and city staff. Again, this is to request your approval of the resolution to establish and levy assessments for the city's assessment districts for the upcoming fiscal year. We've completed the annual review, the required under the Landscaping Lighting Act of 1972 and including the preparation of the engineer's report, which outlines a method of apportionment and details of the benefit of each parcel. The proposed assessments are consistent with the prior years and are necessary to continue maintaining service levels and community standards within each district. The assessment is increased by CPI, the consumer index, price index. We respectfully request your approval of this resolution so we may proceed with the levying of assessments and ensure uninterrupted service and upkeep in the coming fiscal year. I'm happy to answer your questions. I mean, yeah.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Aranda?
Same question, or actually no, I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Freels?
Which speakers did it? I had a quick question, the, under the discussion, each year, it says each year, city council will adopt, this is something I just caught. Report shows a special tax amount of each parcel of district. The meth, the method of appropriation found out from formation report allowed for an annual escalator to the maximum special tax amount. The established annual escalator is equal to, or the annual consumer index price of all urban consumers for the San Francisco-San Jose area. And for the, for the last two, it was for the San Francisco Oakland Hayward area. That confuses me a little bit because the cost of living up there is much more extensive? So how is it, we can't use an escalator for something closer to home, let's say Gilroy or Salinas?
Mayor and council, maybe I can respond to that?
Hi Doug, thank you.
Yes, so the CPI was selected at the time the district was formed and that becomes a permanent aspect of the calculation. And so I can't, none of us present can speak to exactly why that was selected. However, what I can say is for the other cities that we do this for, or in the central coast area and areas south of San Francisco and the East Bay area as well. It's more common to see South San Francisco or the west side of the Bay CPIs. I don't know why, but this is, and it's just interesting to me too, that these are two different CPIs here within the small city, but those are what were selected by the assessment engineer and the council that was sitting at the time that these districts were formed.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia?
My same comments from the previous issue. If we've, we haven't had a chance to, to speak with and/or send a detailed letter out to affected residents, you know, making sure they understand exactly what, what's going on other than just a notice in our, our meeting notes. Would suggest we do that. Be appreciated.
Thank you. Now open up a public hearing.
No speaker cards received, Madam Mayor, and seeing no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Closing public hearing. Back to the council. Councilmember Aranda?
No questions or comments, thank you.
Councilmember Freels?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Thank you, I'm good.
Thank you, council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia, thank you. May I have a motion to approve a resolution approving the report prepared in connection with the fiscal year 2025-26 levy of assessments in connection with the Valley Vista Landscape and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District 1 and approve a resolution confirming a diagram and assessment in connection with the fiscal year 2025-26 levy of assessments in connection with Valley Vista Landscape and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District 1.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion made by councilmember Morris Lopez, seconded by councilmember Aranda. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Administrative report, treasures report and monthly financial statements. Hi Wendy, welcome.
Good evening. You have in your pack today, the financial report for the month ended April 30th, representing 10 months of the city's fiscal year or 83% of the fiscal year. Our general fund revenues are at 80% for the year to date and the general fund expenditures are at 77% for the year to date. The net effect is a positive change in the general fund balance of $180,000. Our water enterprise fund revenues are at 76% for the year to date and expenses are at 69%. The net effect is a positive change of $858,000 for the year. Our sewer enterprise fund revenues are at 87% for the year and expenses are at 95%, showing a positive change in the sewer fund balance of $703,000.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from the council? Councilmember Aranda?
No questions or comments. Thank you for the report Wendy.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez?
I have a couple of questions regarding the actual line items of the check voucher register. On, anything that kind of gets my attention is something like over 15 or 20K. So I was curious about the 24K for Cypress Water Services. Is that monthly? Is that quarterly expense?
I, I think I can answer that. I haven't, I would have to pull up the check and the invoices to confirm, but it sounds to me more than likely that that was two monthly payments made at one time. So you saw a double check.
Okay, and it's, and what services are they actually providing just for edification for the public that's here and on Zoom?
Therefore, there's the, it's the water operations, I believe.
They're the wastewater operator.
Okay. And then also MNS Engineers Incorporated, we had a 28K, almost 29K. Is that a monthly or is that bimonthly, quarterly for the services?
They bill monthly. Again, that could have been a, two invoices paid for the previous month and the current month.
So monthly about 14K, 15K maybe?
Their services vary on what they do and they do a number of different projects for us, including the sewer project.
Okay, and then City of Hollister for 68K? And that was issued in April 17?
That's the, it sounds like the communications invoice, the annual communications invoice that we get.
I'm sorry, come again. What was that for Hollister?
It sounds like the annual communications invoice. Again, we, we'd have to have staff pull that invoice and take a look at it.
So Hollister is providing that service for our city?
I think so. Again, I need to look at the invoice to confirm that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you for the question, councilmember. If she's referring to communications, it's usually regarding public service, public safety, meaning fire, 911 could be it. But we also remember we do pay City of Hollister for fire services.
Right.
Among other, other things.
Yeah, it just wasn't listed that way, so I was kind of confused about the total.
Right.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as RGS Government Services, 11, 12K round up. Is that for the work they did as far as recruitment for our last recruitment?
It depends. We have a few different contracts out with RGS, so it could be for recruitment. They're also helping us with our impact fee study. There's a bunch of different reasons why we would have a invoice with RGS.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia?
No questions, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from chambers?
Michael Poncy?
Oh, good thing I remembered to ask. Hi Michael, welcome.
Hi, Michael Poncy, 803 First Street. I just have a quick question for Wendy. This, this month, I don't see, or this, or this reading here, I don't see any charges for to the water, water regional quality control board for fines for violation of our sewer permit. And I, since I have Wendy here, I just want to ask, have we paid any fines in this budget year that we're looking at now? And if we did, how much those fines have been? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. No other speaker cards received and no hands raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Any further comments from the council? Thank you very much. Thanks Wendy.
Welcome.
Consent agenda, we have 11 items on the consent agenda. Would any member of the council wish to pull an item for separate vote? Councilmember Aranda?
None to pull.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels? Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez? Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia?
None to pull.
Thank you. I don't either. May I have a motion to to approve all the items on the consent agenda? A public comment? Would anybody from the?
Madam Mayor, I had a speaker card for the Mandala Project, the street closure, but it appears that she's, she's gone.
Okay.
No, because it's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Uh, may I have a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels made the motion. Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem? Mayor Protem Sabathia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, discussion item, discussion on the feasibility of a pilot community fund program. Uh, sorry, City Manager, Ashley Colick.
Uh, thank you Mayor, let me just find my place in the agenda. I am a little bit sidetracked. Did we, are we, did we, are we at action items or did we? Are we gonna talk about the budget? Uh, yes.
I'm on, I'm on seven.
So.
Seven, eight, nine? I'm sorry, I'm looking at my agenda.
So we're at, so we're at nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a different agenda.
I messed up, sorry Mayor.
Thank you, that's all.
Sorry, I was looking at, um, a, a different agenda, my bad, uh, action items. Uh. Okay, sorry, um. Uh, fiscal year 2025-26 budget summary, advancing strategic goals, operational readiness and organizational development.
Yes, thank you Mayor, members of the public, sorry for, for the confusion, even I was a little, we got, we had a lot.
We had a lot.
And, um, so thank you Liz, let me see if I can advance this a little bit, um, I'm gonna go through this, I'm gonna try not to repeat the things, there's, there's been a lot of action from when we went through the budget on June 4th to today. Um, and so I'm gonna try to kind of go through it systematically and then I'll, we'll take any questions, um, at the end. So, um, last time we started the budget discussion with a quote. Leadership is the capacity to translate vision into reality and budgets are the map we use to get there. And our budget this year, um, is quite complex, um, is different and we are facing quite a few budget constraints um, with lots of, uh, difficult decisions, um, that have led us here today. So in fiscal year 25-26, and this is kind of a overview of the general fund, um, budget, it reflects council direction that you provided on June 4th. It incorporates, uh, post review adjustments and finalized contracts and it's structurally balanced and aligned with the five-year strategic plan, we kind of went through those, uh, in detail last time. And the budget, the general fund budget also supports operational readiness and infrastructure priorities. Some of those adjustments, um, because, uh, came because we had about a $200,000 deficit. We talked about, um, the cancellation of community fund grants, uh, reduction in cost of living assumptions, uh, for city staff. Deferral of an administrative assistant hire. Um, we shifted some funds that should have been, um, that were kind of in the wrong budget category, so for grant writing, for our, uh, trying to find support for our water efforts, um, that money is gonna, that budget line item has now been shifted to the water fund. Um, and we found about 70,000 in department-wide contract, uh, soft cost savings, so we did, did some, lots of adjusting. Um, as you can see, we, we, it feels silly for me to even say this, but it's 26,000 in a surplus, 65,000 in reserve. Um, basically, we have a balanced budget. One of the biggest constraints that we talked about in our last budget discussion was fire protection services. Um, it, from June 4th to today, a lot of movement has happened, um, more than I thought was possible, but um, so essentially, City of Hollister, um, took a look at our, um, April 2025 counter offer. Um, if you recall way back when, for the benefit of the public, City of Hollister received a counter offer from San Juan Batista and San Minado County and that offer said, hey, look, this is what we can afford for fire services, do you want to work with this number? Um, essentially, um, they at first didn't do anything with that offer, um, and kind of in June, it kind of came back around again, so, um, we very quickly, you guys met, you discussed it. You authorized, uh, a new fire services, for services agreement with the City of Hollister, um, the county did the same. So we are now back in an agreement, um, with everyone in the county, that Hollister will be the fire services provider for the county. Um, as you know, that's about a $465,000 annual cost for the next fiscal year. Um, we have secured services through 2029, um, and we know we're going to have to have, um, long discussions and, and make some serious decisions about revenue generation in the future in order to continue to pay for the service. Um, and then, but, but the flip side of that is that we have consistent public safety operations and that nothing is going to change that in the near future. Um, which I think works out better for everyone. So, um, there's also some organizational realignment that is happening, um, we had a long discussion about the fact that we are, um, very over budget in community development and why that is. Um, within community development, we have, uh, a lot of planning and building services that are contracted out. Our contract, our current contractor is Fourleaf, um, we spend, right now, we are, I think, uh, $200,000 probably over budget in that category. So one of the things that we talked about extensively was how do we realign that and save some money and what can we do? And a part of that is bringing those services back in-house and it feels counterintuitive. Uh, but the goal is that we control that budget, we control what people make and how much hours we want to dedicate to it. Um, and so by bringing those services in-house, um, we have, so we've realigned the budget to do that, that means, um, a senior planner has to get a hired code enforcement slash building inspector, a permit technician has got to be hired and a building official. And so in your packet tonight, you had a job description for a permit technician, you also had a job description for a building official. Both those positions, by the way, are part-time, uh, non-benefited positions within the city. Then we talked about, um, the capital improvement plan, just, we did, we went over, you know, what's on the plan, right? The sewer force main to Hollister completion phase, we are rapidly approaching completion, um, and decommissioning of of the lift state, of the wastewater treatment plant, excuse me, I was using the wrong words, too many, too many words. Um, we have the water import design that has to happen, um, in this upcoming fiscal year. We have Rancho Vista lift station upgrades, potentially pavement and sidewalk improvements. Um, we'd like to see a luck park design, um, done and we, um, need to rapidly finish some city hall improvements and those just, those are just the highlights. We also have a third street transformation plan that we'd love to get developed. Um, so there's, there's lots of things, um, on the CIP that we went through. So then here are our next steps, so we have some cautious optimism, right? Um, staff will continue to monitor and implement different phases, uh, of the budget starting on July 1, once this is approved tonight, um, we will, um, track our capital project, uh, progress and we will, um, provide a mid-year update, um, to the council, I think, um, and, and we also have some, a lot of things we're doing, um, internally in terms of policy, procedure, process and how, how we do things moving forward. And then, um, and we kind of talked about this, you have a balanced budget, modest reserves, enterprise and special revenue funds are adequately funded, uh, future planning, um, as we look at public safety costs and revenue strategies for, in particular for fire services. So the next steps, um, implement budgets and projects, launch a mid-year performance report and initiate the fire services, uh, district feasibility study with the county and the City of Hollister. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Aranda.
Yeah, question, um, apologies if I'm not following, uh, the community funds are of 30,000, we are removing, like, we are pausing?
Pausing that.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, uh, God, I, you guys are gonna kill me. Um, I'm really concerned with a lot of the, um, public comments that we got today regarding, um, all these nonprofits that are trying to do great things for a city, especially the, uh, the, is it the antique fair, the San Juan Day? Um, and you're literally hearing it right here where we might not be able to do this and I think it's an important aspect to our town. Um, and so I would like to see, maybe we bring back some of those community funds, um, so that we can offset, um, use that, use those funds to pay for some of the fees that these nonprofits are incurring, is that something we can do with that? Uh, and the only reason I'm, I'm asking is just, you know, I, I get that we have a speed schedule, we want to you know, get that going and this year is kind of like the, the, the year of no, um, but I think too much no might, might kill us too, so is there any way we can, um, allocate some funding for, for some of these nonprofits that are here in San Juan?
May I respond?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I would, I would counter, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I respect that angst of what are we gonna do now, how do we figure out how to support our nonprofits? And I think there are ways that we can do that, that is a further discussion, but that doesn't necessarily impact the budget if, if I can say it that way.
Got it.
Um, you know, a lot of cities, the recreation department is responsible for special events and promotion in the city. And so how do we best utilize our recreation department to work with nonprofits? And how do we partner in a way that's advantageous for both the city and the nonprofit? And I think we can find a way to do that, but I don't think that that's necessarily through the community fund this year.
Got it, thank you. Um, other than that, uh, no questions, comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freels.
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Just want to say thank you for taking this back and reworking it, um, I like the fact that you said pausing the community fund. Um, a lot, I missed the public, um, comment, but I'll listen to them and I regret, I was stuck in traffic once again. But I think, um, I'm just gonna throw this out there, I think that, um, you know, we do have ordinances and fee schedules and permitting and I feel like maybe as a small town, we could maybe consider, um, for future discussion and, and voting, you know, for a fee, a separate fee schedule for local nonprofits. And the nonprofits have to have legal paperwork that proves that they are in fact an intact and legal operating nonprofit. Um, they must prove that they're having board meetings that are open to the public. So all those things that nonprofits have to have in place legally and I would like to consider um, awarding our local San Juan Batista nonprofits a reduction in fee. Um, and this is not to eliminate any outsiders from coming in, but it's a way to, um, like you said, maybe recreation will help, but I think first and foremost, I think that that may be one way the city can actually give without giving a dollar amount, is consider a priority and a fee reduction, um, um, schedule for local nonprofits that are proven to be legit nonprofits with all this, all the paperwork and all of the things they have to do to be considered nonprofit filing with the state of California. Um, my questions, second part of my questions is that with the three positions, it kind of I, I understand where you're going with the city manager and I appreciate it, that you reined in some of the, um, over expenditures that we've been spending on outside contracts, I appreciate that because that was one of the concerns I had when you first came in as an interim and said, can you go find the money, can you find where this money's, you know, bleeding out to? And it definitely was our contracts and so you responded in kind by coming up with in-house positions. But I recall only being two positions and now before us, there's three. Um, the building, I think where my question is, there is a building, let me get this right. There's a building official position approving, um, their job description. Um, non, it's exempt at will, part-time. Um, then there is the, um, building inspector, so I'm kind of confused, um, now with those two positions. Well, the building professional official position will be now in charge of code enforcement officer and the building inspector?
Okay, let me go back just a couple.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the, when we, when we met on June 4th, we had originally, originally my proposal was to bring in a senior planner and to change, to adjust the code enforcement officer position to also include minor building inspection. So that's why you see a title change and an adjustment and an increase in duties for that particular position. For, as we further examined the budget and we talked with finance to find more savings, we spend a lot of money on permit technician and building official through Fourleaf, that's our contractor. The building official, uh, rate through Fourleaf is about $140 an hour. The permit technician through Fourleaf is about $80 an hour. So by bringing those two positions in-house, and I think it's in your packet tonight, you can see the dollar amount that we're estimating that we're gonna save by bringing those in-house. A building official is a very specialized position with a lot of education and certifications. And so we're actually hoping that we're gonna find a retiree or somebody who just has some extra time for us to come in here, because we don't, we only need that person maybe five hours a week, is what we're estimating. We need a permit technician in-house about 20 hours a week because we have somebody here answering questions, taking in permit applications, ensuring that fees are collected, that person is here, uh, four days a week.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, and so you just brought something up that I missed, so then you're eliminating the ask for the senior planner at this time?
No.
No.
Senior planner is still on the list.
So the senior planner is still on the list with the addition of these three?
Two, yes.
Or two, okay, so the senior planner now, refresh my memory, that individual is now acting as a somewhat like a building or code person?
That, the senior planner?
Or, I mean, the associate right now, that we, she's kind of.
Yeah, this, the associate planner right now is kind of working a little out of class because she's doing a lot of work that a senior planner would do for us. Um, so we need to have somebody in, in-house with more experience, uh, working on, we have huge projects, like the gas station project, for instance, um, so we need somebody who can come in and help us, um, with things like that, general plan, housing element, there's a lot of upper higher level senior planning work that we need support with.
And she's also doing, if I'm not mistaken, somewhat of the permit technician work as well?
No, we have a, we have a permit tech in-house through Fourleaf right now.
Okay, so that's where they're charging over and above what we're proposing?
Exactly.
Okay, and then as far as the building inspector, I like the fact that you, you're opening up that to a public announcement to recruit.
Yeah, we're, we haven't, we haven't narrowed down on a plan yet, but we are in, we're figuring all of that out, how, what the process will be for recruitment. Our first, our first step is senior planner and, and getting a senior planner in-house, but yes.
Okay, and then these others will, is there a timeframe where you will start recruiting for the other positions?
We, we, um, we are gonna develop a plan in July, so I'll, I'll have more information for the council in August.
Okay, and then is Fourleaf aware of our strategy?
Yes.
Okay, and do they need like prior notice, like 60 days, 90 days?
Of course. They, they're, we have built in, I've been working with Wendy on a, on a budget for transition and so I have reached out to Fourleaf and we will work on a transition plan.
Okay, there isn't a contract that we're binding to that will get us into any sort of breach of contract with them?
We're okay.
Nope, we're okay, okay, great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Strachey.
Thank you for balancing, scraping and finding, even though it's a small amount. Do not feel embarrassed about seeing those numbers in green, even if it was a dollar. Dollar, a dollar of green is better than two hundred K in red we were looking at. So that's a big, a big flip. That's something to be, to be proud of. Um, so thank you for getting creative and doing that. Um, and I heard, I heard the mayor say this at the community town, town hall event that we had, like, I, not that what you're saying bothers me, the thought of, of setting you up as the community ball person and the no person offends me because you're doing such a great job and you're looking out for the community. It's not like, you may not be giving them the answers they want, um. I'm gonna go Batman here, giving them the answers they need. Nobody wants a, a, uh, bankrupt town. So like, I, I just wanna make, make that clear. And I think we all can agree to the way we wanna paint and portray, portray you. Like, it may not be warm fuzzies, but when budgets are tight, somebody's gotta be the responsible person looking out for that, and you are doing that for us and should be celebrated for it. So that's my, that's my soapbox. Uh, I have been doing some research while we're sitting up here, um, and listening to people. I, I, I sympathize, empathize with, with our nonprofits and locals who, you know, are asking for, um, waiving of fees and things like that and supplementing staff time with volunteer time. Um, and, you know, there's some of that people that can be done. I want us to be very, very cautious about if we look at that and how to do that. Um, there are certain types of fees that cannot be waived in California. Uh, deposits and staff overtime are on the exempt list. We can't, can't reduce those. Um, and then in terms, and, and my understanding of the way we've been looking about adjusting our fee schedules and things like that, I want people to, you know, our, our community to understand, the city's not doing this to make money. And we're not looking, we're, we're just looking to, to break even on a lot of these, a lot of these things. Um, and so I get that a nonprofit might be asking and whatnot, but the, the answer really is that we are trying to make sure that we're doing proper accounting of staff time and city funds to, to break even. Nobody's trying to make money even from a, a nonprofit. Um, and I think it was Councilmember Morris Lopez that said, you, you appreciated that, that Ashley, the city manager, was saying, it is not a cancellation of community fund. It, it's a pause. And even within our own personal finances, you know, there are things that we wanna be doing all the time, and when the money's not there, it paused that, that ask of that desire until you, until you have it. And that's the responsible thing to, to do. Um, we, we, all of us care about our community. We want to do better for the community, and I hope people are appreciating the fact that, um, you know, when money's tight, when budgets are tight, there's certain things that a line, a line's gotta be cut somewhere. And in order to keep the lights on, we may not be able to do everything that we've, we've wanted to do. Um, and in terms of making sure we can keep doing all these extra things, we need to be having serious conversations about how to bring revenue in, into town. Um, but yeah, we should be, we should be very, and, and my quick read and, and, and understanding about, I don't think we can make the distinction on local nonprofits versus nonprofits in general. There's a discriminatory, nondiscrimination clause in there, um, around what can be discounted according to the, the state website. Essentially, any nonprofit that comes asking, you know, yes, they've gotta prove that they're a nonprofit, there's things they gotta do, but any nonprofit that comes asking should be given, um, equal consideration. I, I, we, we cannot, we cannot make, to my understanding, cannot make a distinction based on them being local or, or not. I think that's about all, all I had.
Thank you. I, I appreciate all of those comments, um, especially, uh, the nondiscriminatory one for nonprofits. Uh, our city manager said this is her no year, and never has she had that before. Uh, with the, with the mindset that, um, we are, uh, or our city manager has taken care of some, some really, really big items in the first six months of, of being here. And four of those were as an interim. Um, so hugely appreciated where we have come. Uh, part of that is, uh, a wee bit of a surplus. Um, I, I, I'd like to remind the whole entire council that we are the one jurisdiction that has balanced our budget, and we have a surplus. Um, oh, golly, let me, I don't even know when we weren't. Um, so super appreciative of the work and the long hours and the late nights and the not time off that was spent, um, doing all of this work. Huge, um, and hugely appreciated. Um, this was a, a major endeavor for, for somebody who's actually been on the job for a month and a half now. Um, so thank you for that. Um, I did, I did say that this was the year of, of no and trying to get done everything that, that you got done in this short of time, but that we were working on a fee schedule and, um, we worked, we were working on a, uh, an ordinance on vacancies, whether it's a, an absentee, uh, owner or a, uh, absentee, uh, uh, an absentee building owner or an absentee tenant. Um, so good luck in your next six months. Uh, we are working on the city. Um, and, uh, this, this was, um, an amazing endeavor, and I appreciate all that you have done. Um, we do need to be fiscally responsible whilst ensuring, uh, the safety of this city. Uh, so job well done. Um, I am looking forward to a lot of these coming in-house. We have had a lot of the positions coming in-house. Um, we are a little city with every single opportunity and, uh, issue that large cities have, um, with not so large budget to handle all of that. So again, kudos for where we are today. Um, especially coming in at the end of someone else's budget. Uh, Wendy, thanks for all the help on this too. Um, di- did we do? Thank you. Um, I'd like to now open it up to public comment.
Michael Poncy?
Michael, remember it's comments, no Q and A. Thank you and welcome. Easy does it, mister, or we're gonna have to buy a new one.
Thank you. Uh, okay. No time. Um, I've been reading up on the, the many issues that San Juan faces, uh, including this budget. And first and foremost, I would like to request the face-to-face sit-down meeting with, uh, city manager Ashley Collett to converse on the many issues San Juan Batista faces and any two council members, if they're interested, so we don't get, uh, in trouble with the Brown Act. Um, so the, so the discussion can be longer than three minutes that I have up here. Uh, I like to test the model, the new model of one city, one voice. Um, I have many questions on the budget after reading the San Juan Batista digital budget book, two thousand, two thousand twenty-six draft six thirteen twenty-five to be addressed tonight. I hope that council has taken the time to read the entire budget as I have. Uh, beginning on page nine in the transmittal letter, six four twenty-five, the projected balance of sixty-five thousand with projected revenues about two point five million is tight, as we all know. San Juan Batista general fund is generally annually about two point three million, so that's already two thou, two hundred thousand short. The community development, development fund shows the structural, signs of structural imbalance. The most pressing are public safety contracts, law enforcement and fire service contracts. I hope that San Juan has no intention of continuing the fire contract into two thousand and twenty-nine, when it reaches six hundred and six hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars annually. This will surely bankrupt San Juan. City council staff report, June four, page three, CIP priorities states thirty-four service sewer force main to Hollister will sus- substantially, will be substantially completed this financial year. Page thirty-two, sewer enterprise fund, paragraph second, states, this project anticipated to be comple- completed by June two thousand twenty-five. Today is the seventeenth, that's thirteen days from now. How can this be as San Juan Batista doesn't even have any agreements with industrial users that I know of? Uh, I know we have, uh, two engineers, uh, Mr. Doug Pike and Jerry Sanguenetti. I hope I said that right. Um, also, uh, what did I leave out? Oh, this is the question the council should be. This is a, this is a question the councils be, should be asking. Understand that M and S has drafted assault management report, which as far as I know has not been completed and available to the public. Also, at the November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four city meeting, uh, city council meeting, city manager Doug Reynolds stated that analysis complete to
Thank you, Michael.
To the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, back to the council, council member Aronda.
Uh,
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we have more public comment? Thank you. State your name for the record.
Bob Quaid.
Thank you.
I'm, um, talking behalf of Spirit of San Juan Batista. I'm assuming, I haven't looked through the entire budget, but with the, um, reduction of the thirty thousand dollars in community grants.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. We can't, we can't hear you.
We normally get, past few years, we've got twenty thousand dollars each year for the Spirit of San Juan. Spirit of San Juan promotes San Juan Batista. That's our only function. I don't own a business in town. I'm a resident in town. I have no financial interest in promoting San Juan, other than I'm concerned since and I want San Juan to succeed. If you reduce our funding, we don't get the twenty thousand dollars, we may survive this year, cuz we do try to raise money other ways. But, um, San Juan Day, we may not have that funding this year, but just, we advertise in Edwill Monterey, we advertise in Vi- Via with the triple A magazine, we put ads on KSBW on a, um, semi-consistent basis. The pamphlets you see in the airports that, you know, that, and a lot of, um, hotels, all those pamphlets, we put that, that costs us eight thousand dollars this year, put those pamphlets out. We, um, Visit California, we work with Visit California, and we've advertised with them. Um, we put out social media ads on all events in town, any event, we put out social media ads on that. The walking maps in town, that Rosa's houses, we just paid three thousand dollars, I just wrote the check today, three thousand dollars, but to get new pamphlets for the walking trail in the San Juan Batista. So you talk about economic development, you wanna promote San Juan. If you lose, you have to look in the long, the long picture. If you cut that funding out, we may reduce the number of visitors that we have in the town. That's our only purpose. The, um, Spirit of San Juan Batista is to promote San Juan Batista, try to draw tourists into town. I know some of you may think we don't do anything, but we do a lot of stuff. We, we don't always get all the recognition, but we do, at one time, we looked at putting a billboard up out on, out on the highway, which you mentioned earlier today, about putting a billboard up. They wanted to put two up. When we looked into it, we actually designed the billboard, it cost us twelve hundred dollars. Put the billboard right, was gonna cost us about another, um, eighty-five hundred, about ten thousand dollars just to put a billboard up. And we got a donation for that from, actually, the developer that developed, um,
Rancho Vista.
Rancho Vista was going to donate ten thousand dollars for that. We thought we had a free site to put a billboard up, but it didn't happen because that, that it was gonna cost us, they wanted, I think, eight hundred dollars a month. But to put a billboard out on the highway, it costs probably twenty thousand dollars a year to put a billboard out there, just a billboard. So you gotta look at, if you want someone to promote San Juan, if you cut the funding out, we're not gonna be able to do it, and we may lose tourists. And that's, if you don't have as many tourists down, your sales tax is going down, you're not gonna have the revenue.
Thank you very much.
Elise Bruntall, I live at Thirteen Donner Street here in town.
Hi, Elise, welcome.
Thank you very much. Um, so one of my questions was actually answered about the, um, cost of the fire. Um, so my understanding is that throughout the next few years, it's going to significantly increase even more than it already has. Um, with that being said, I'd like to just reiterate that I, um, am grateful you guys are looking at the fire district, and I hope you will continue looking at other alternative, all, all, la, 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 sorry. Other alternatives for us, um, that will provide us the security that we both want and need, um, while, um, keeping the cost as low as we possibly can. Um, my next question, um, was the sixty-five thousand and it, the reserves you were talking about, is that just sixty-five thousand for this year? Or is that sixty-five thousand being added to our reserves? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. Back to the council. Any further comments, questions, concerns?
Uh, no, just other than thank you, Ashley, for everything you did. Um, uh, no questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Frails.
Just a few, thank you, Ashley, Wendy, thanks too for, um, and Liz for, and Roy for sitting down and spending a lot of hours after hours here in city hall. Um, I, I wanna thank, um, Daki, Morris Lopez. Good point, bringing up the Four Leaf contract. Um, I, every time I sign the checks, I look through the invoices and, um, eighty dollars an hour for a permit check that's never seems to be on time. Um, um, stuff slips through the cracks. Um, just one of my neighbors, for example, their deck fell apart and, um, just between dealing with our terrible HOA and Four Leaf, these poor people have been, it's been a year and a half just to get a deck repaired. And Four Leaf admitted to it slipping through the cracks. So this was a good catch, and, um, I'm looking forward to telling Four Leaf no this year. So, thank you.
The year of no. Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes, thank you, everybody involved with, um, balancing this budget, but I also wanna just, um, bring this up. We have been working, and I thought we were almost there with a fee schedule. We went back and forth about a property tax, and we did not wanna go down that route in dealing with vacant buildings on Third Street, and I always felt that partially the owner should be more on the property owner or the building owner for the upkeep. And if it's not rented, because they are in charge of their building, their property, we cannot force anybody to do anything, but I think if we do have a little stick in terms of where we were going with the fee schedule, um, you know, it is what it is. It's punitive. If you can't keep your building, um, rented and the upkeep of it, you know, physically and maintain, if it is a historic building, which most of them are, we know, um, that, you know, we're kind of dragging our feet on that. And if we can collect fees that way, and, um, you know, that's something that kinda got dropped by the wayside, and I know that Protem Mayor had brought it up a few months ago, like, where are we with this? And I think that if we can start being more proactive at that, I think balancing the budget was huge, but we also have to look at how we're collecting or not collecting fees that are right there in front of our faces. And it's really impacting the other businesses that are struggling downtown. And the way that we can help them is to go after these fees, I think. Um, not I think, I think I'm, I, I'm pretty certain of that. And also the weed abatement program, we have a building at the gateway of, um, South Alameda that's sitting there blaring, glaring with weeds all over it and boarded up windows. You know, that's not a good look for people coming into our town. And we've been sitting on that and sitting on that, and I have been asking about it, and, uh, there's plenty of legal roadblocks, but, you know, when it comes time to charge this person, five hundred dollars or whatever we're gonna charge her is not enough. Um, so we really need to step it up on our fee collects, fee schedule, start collecting. Um, I don't think anyone should be given a waiver. I also think another idea, and where I'm going with this, is when you, they do get a renter in a building or a property, and they pull a business permit, and I'm thinking this is gonna be from the front. and they pull a business permit and I'm thinking this is going to be from the front, front office when they submit their business permit, a license. And they adhere to a business plan or hours of operation, we need to hold them to those hours of operation. Um, you know, because if they're coming into town and saying, I'm going to be open Tuesday through Sunday from eleven AM to seven PM, just example. And then four months into it, they start shutting down hours. That's also on them. And what can the city do if they're pulling the permit, they're signing the contract and they're stating these hours of operation? We need to hold them accountable for that. Um, and I think once we collect these fees and we start having people that come in and are being good business owners and you know, holding their doors open. Because all it takes is for tourists to come into town one time and say, hey, on the internet, they said they were open and then they come back two times and they're closed. They're not going to come back ever again and they might just spread the word. Um, so I think we need to look at all of that. And I think that when you do that, then you can have, you know, the money there for the nonprofits and whatever else we want to do. Um, and right now we don't have any of that extra money because we're just, I think we're, we're not taking care of our our checkbook and that aspect of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia.
Yep, uh, I just wanted, I think slight correction, you said property tax, I think we were talking about vacancy tax. Yeah, and I think we, we decided when we were talking about it that it would be more of a, a fee schedule targeted at, at um you know, promoting open businesses and filling empty things, but great reminder that we had a review of it. We changed them, I don't know where that went. It's been, I know we get distracted with our other things, but that isn't important and of all the things that um our community is asking us to do a lot of the things, it's hard because we're sitting here trying to be fiscally responsible. That's something that doesn't necessarily cost us any more money and it's a, a big thing that people keep asking for over and over again. Um, we, we should, we should close on that and deliver on that, that thing, making that a priority. So it's just another not a free thing to check off of our list, but you know, should, especially given the amount of work that we had put in into compiling that should be a quick. So long as none of us want to make edits to it the next time it comes in. Uh, but that would be great. That was my only other comment.
Thank you. Uh, I have nothing further. Um, so with that, um, may I have a motion to adopt a resolution approving the final fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six budget inclusive of all post-June four twenty twenty five adjustments and authorized staff to proceed with implementation effective July one, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, may I have a roll call, please? Oh, sorry, uh, motion made by uh Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia, seconded by Councilmember Aranda. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aranda.
Yes.
Councilmember Freels.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia.
Yes.
Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Seriously, well done. Discussion item, uh, consider the establishment of the San Juan Batista Office of Film and Television Committee.
Thank you, mayor. Assistant to the city manager, Roy Morales is going to make a brief presentation.
Who, who's, who's making that?
Are you going to read dance?
Yes.
This um is a great opportunity for me to just remind the council that um some sort of a film commission or some opportunity to highlight the city's history in film and television. Um, and how to capitalize on that is a great uh economic opportunity and a part of our strategic plan.
Thank you.
I'll start.
Yeah, you start. Thank you.
This was, good evening, sorry. This was authored by myself and Dan DeRees. So the background on this is, it's a um, it's not an action item, it's just a request. So staff recommends that the city council consider the establishment of the San Juan Batista Film Office as standing ad hoc advisory committee. Initiative supports strategic theme, one, economic development and historic preservation of the city's five year strategic plan by leveraging San Juan Batista's unique architectural and environmental assets to diversi- to diversify the local economy and amplify culture recognition. So as most of you know, there's been a couple, two films that we know of that have been filmed in the city of San Juan. Um, and that was something big for this community and it was something good that happened for our community. So with this, we want to establish an ad hoc committee of two designated appointees from city council and two from uh possibly planning or anybody else to establish a, a committee to contact and establish a relationship with people in the um in the film industry. So to streamline the process of them actually coming to our city, applying for permits and so they don't have to wait and we can just work with them, get them here sooner and, and start that relationship with them. So this is a way of them and, and to have a personal contact within the city. So they know, you know, to get the process done faster. But there's a letter that actually Dan DeRees wrote to us that city clerk will read.
Please sit by. Okay, go.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, as we know, San Juan Batista recently hosted a a major motion picture production featuring, featuring Leonardo DiCaprio and Sean Penn. This wasn't just a one-off event, it was a proof of concept. We now have a clear evidence that Sean, the San Juan Batista can serve as a viable, viable in-demand film location. So the question becomes, how do we attract more productions like that? The answer is simple. We established the San Juan Batista Office for Film and Television. This office would act as a dedication point of contact for film studios, independent filmmakers, location scouts and commercial producers. It would be responsible for registering San Juan Batista with the California Film Commission. This gives us access to statewide production uh directories, resources and grants. Listing our town on national international location scout databases. So when producers search for historic western town or mission architecture or timeless Americana, we show up. Short showcasing our key sites, Mission San Juan Batista, Third Street Historic Facade, the rolling green hills, our vineyards, our town square on a branded chanting page or digital uh lookbook designed specifically for the industry. Streamlining local permitting, we make it easier for, for productions to say yes to shooting here by offering them a clear supportive and uh fast process. Coordinating with local businesses and, and residents to minimize this disruptions and maximize benefits, including lodging, catering, security and even background extras. This is a low-cost, high upside economic development. Other towns have done this with great success. From Gilroy to Grass Valley, small cities have generated hundreds of thousands of dollars in local income, hotels, restaurants, contractors, all from production crews spending time and money while on location.
No, you still have thirty eight seconds.
And beyond economics, there is a civic pride and visibility. When our town shows up on the silver, silver screen or even in a music video streaming series, the whole world sees that we already know. San Juan Batista is cinematic. I'm not asking for a big budget or any budget. I'm asking for your support and your blessing to formally establish the office and allow us to pursue registration and outreach under the city's banner. We'll report back to, with cost grant opportunities and a recommended path forward. We have a momentum. We have a stunning iconic setting. Let's make sure we never miss another opportunity to put San Juan Batista on the map.
Thank you for that.
So again, I think it's a good thing. I'll work with uh Mr. DeRees on this project to move it forward. Hopefully we report back in August, at least first steps on this project.
Thank you. Is there anybody besides me on the council who wants to do this?
Do it as in support or do it as in be on the committee?
Well, one, be on the committee, two, to support. This is only a discussion item.
No to committee, yes to support.
I love that, thank you.
I'm good with it.
Thank you.
And it's been four movies.
There's been a lot of movies. We, I mean, Michael can attest to that, you could ten. Who, uh, how many have been where, where the city itself has been involved in, I mean, Mary Edge can tell you.
Four, I can tell you. That I know of, four.
Wow. It's not out yet.
Just that, just that's one recent, there was one with uh John Ritter, there was one with Kevin, uh Mark Harmon and then uh Vertigo.
The most recent one was One Battle After Another.
Yeah, terrible title, terrible title.
Correct.
Yes, year before. Coming out in October, I believe, or September. I don't remember. I don't know. Uh, so uh, who else on the council wants to be on it?
I'll, I'll do it. I can be on the committee and support, whatever.
Besides me, who else would like to be on it? Oh, you and alternate you. Copy that, understood. We'll work with the planning commission to find other people. Was there a recommendation for somebody else? For a, a public member or? Okay, okay, we'll discuss. Sorry. Nothing decided.
If I could just add a couple words of wisdom.
Yes.
We'd like to keep the committees rather small so that we're nimble and we can move through things quickly.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, thanks, Roy. Thanks, Dan. Uh, informational items, uh, city managers report. Uh, do we have any public comment on the, the discussion item? Thank you. Name.
Thank you, Elise Brunel, thirteen Donner Street. Um, I was part of a dinner conversation about this very subject and um uh, thought it was a fantastic idea. Um, and at that time I offered to provide a telephone number, telephone service which can then turn voicemails into emails to send to the appropriate people. It's technology, we offer it as well as hosting the website for free. And we can also purchase the domain for the city to help case costs down and as well as hosting the website. So I want to make that formal offer for you guys. I hope that helps move it in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, city managers report.
Don't have a presentation tonight, but there is a report in your packet. It's about three pages. And let you guys peruse at your leisure. Um, but I will say it was, it's been a very busy time. My last report out was in April. Since that time, I've become your permanent city manager. Thank you very much. Um, also, um, we had a huge trip to Sacramento. We did advocacy days. Uh, mayor and um council member Freels. Um, and it was, it was a great opportunity. We met with Speaker Laird, staff from Speaker, Senator Laird, excuse me, staff from Speaker Rivas's office. We met with the State Water Resources Control Board, the California Department of Water Resources and the California uh state parks. And we, we were really just trying to make sure that we advocated appropriately for San Juan Batista. We looked at any resources or grant money available. Um, and we, we just, we had a um, some really productive uh fantastic meetings. So just want to make sure that I reported out on that. Um, we have a lot of infrastructure and compliance development projects in the queue. You guys approved the right turn, right-hand turn lane. Um, uh, property purchase and so there's just a lot happening. Um, and so I'm super excited and I know budget constraints and things, but we have a lot to look forward to in San Juan Batista. And the budget doesn't necessarily tell the tale. We are extremely busy um, with lots and lots of opportunities ahead of us. Um, and so that my, my hope is that we, we continue to focus on what is working and what, what is happening and how we can progress those things forward. I think you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Aranda.
No, thank you um very much for, for everything you're doing, Ashley. Great work as always.
Thank you, council member Freels. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
No, but thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Public comment?
No speaker cards, please.
Where's my camera face?
Sorry. Hi, hi again. Uh, I just kind of disappointed there's no uh city manager's report. Uh, I was kind of looking forward to that. Um, but following under city manager report, I would like to ask again since November of two thousand twenty four, what is going on with the salt management report and analysis ready to send to industrial users? Reading in the budget, um, like I asked earlier or stated earlier, it says that the sewer force main project will be done this month, thirteen days. How is that possible? Um, without even any agreements that I know of with industrial users, which is a stipulation for, from Hollister to connect. We need to have agreements with our industrial users to be able to connect to Hollister. They will not accept unless we have those agreements. I have a, an email that I sent, I've been in corresponding with uh Jerry Sangwanetti uh, asking these questions. I had a bunch of questions that I asked and he asked me to, to format them in a enumerated format. I did that. I have had a few quick conversations with Jerry over the phone. I requested a sit-down meeting. Uh, that has not happened. This has been since April twelfth, two thousand twenty five. He has told me that M and S has written the salt management report, but they're waiting on numbers or calculations or whatever. So this was a month ago. I, I, I feel like I'm not being impatient. I have asked for this information since November of two thousand twenty four and I will continue to ask it till uh, I get some results. And not only me, I, I'm speaking for the public, not only me, it's not just me. I feel that the public should have this information. They should know what's going on. Um, our sewer force main project is a year behind already. We are, from what I can figure, we are two, two years out from our, our uh water pipeline connection which should have been done this year. Um, as you know, uh, the longer we wait, the higher the fees go. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, public safety update?
Good evening again. Uh, as you know, one of the major things that we worked on was finishing the fire contract with the city Hollister and the county of uh San Benito, so that's a uh done deal for now. We have been, or I have been in discussions with the chief, uh, the fire chief and how we're going to move forward with the fire district. So that conversation is starting, so I just want to put that out there that it's in the contract that we all agreed to and we're actually talking. So I have also reached out to Baker Tilly, who was a company that was gonna um do the, who had agreed to do the RFP for us before. There's still, we're still in good standings with them. I know that came up before, so we're still in good standings. They respond to me. So things are moving in the positive direction as far as fire contracts. I just want to let people know that, that we're actually moving in a good way. Um, so I've been busy with that. As you can tell, that, that's been one of my major projects. Another one is the Enterprise Fleet Management Contract. Uh, we have the Toyota, it's been um delivered. I think some of you have used it a couple of times. That's extremely helpful for us. So when people travel out of town, city employees ask council as well, they can use that Toyota. We have three Mavericks that are uh soon to arrive. I checked on our fleet, uh, management system this morning. They're somewhere in transit. So I'm working with Public Works, specifically Paul, who's our fleet management person for the transition. So the great thing with enterprises, they pick up the old vehicles. We just have to make sure that we empty them from, with, from our, you know, property that belongs to us and they deliver the new vehicle. So we don't have to travel anywhere to deliver or pick up or any of that stuff. It's all, it all comes to us. So you should be seeing some new Mavericks in town shortly. Um, so that's, that's been huge for us. Uh, I've attended the county-wide Fourth of July rally, safety meetings. I think I've attended four. And those are being hosted by the Hollister Fire Department. I want to give them credit for putting these together. Um, and everybody in the county has attended to include, um, the hospital. Hospital has, uh, a retired fire chief that works for them as their safety coordinator and a, uh, ex-law enforcement person as well. Um, and they're both, they've both been rate at reaching out. They've reached out to my, to me and, uh, a couple of people from the city Hollister, we've met with them at Hazel Hawkins to come up with emergency plans in case any of our major events. Um, we need the hospital for anything. They're on board. We've shared our, um, event plans with them. We shared our event calendar with them. And this is, when I worked in Santa Cruz County, we never had that coordination like with Watsonville Hospital. We did a little bit with Dominican, but this is huge for this county. So I just want to give them credit as well. They've been great partners and I, I think they're going to continue to be great partners. Um, and then I've coordinated with county agencies on encampment cleanup. I know the county, uh, recently during their board of supervisors meeting, they discussed encampments, the cleanup and where they're at with that. Um, I'm working with the county on the one encampment that we have here in town. Um, they do hire a outside consultant for the notification, uh, the three-day notification, the cleanup and the, and providing a receipt for the person that, um, whose belongings will be taken. So I'm working with them to come up with some type of proposal. And I've also drafted a, um, a city resolution for us, um, that hopefully we present to you in August. Until then, I'm working with the city attorney to see how we can use a county's ordinance within the city since we contract law enforcement services with the county. So I'm, I'm, I'm working through that. Um, so that's, that's a huge one. Uh, and then coordinated Fourth of July contracts. So we, the three cameras, I guess those were a hot item since the Fourth of July, um, city Hollister's hosting their rally. Everybody wanted these cameras and we were able to get three. Um, so as soon as I heard those were a hot item, we hurried up and secured those for the city. So we've got that. Uh, and then I was selected to work on a county, uh, with county partners on San Benito County earthquake tabletop exercise. Some, um, one of the proctors on that and, uh, we're actually coming up with curriculum with all the county agencies on how to respond to, uh, an earthquake within the county. So that's, that's pretty exciting stuff. Uh, and like I said here, the group created curriculum for countywide emergency personnel training, which is huge. Uh, and then I just want to give a shout out and, and a kudos to, uh, Paul from Public Works, who is working on the remodel of this building. Um, he's been in, you know, working diligently every single day as far as, um, flooring and other items and, and giving us a timeline, which will, um, address with the public. So people know when the city hall will be closed and services will be closed and, and we'll all be. So I just want to make sure that they're recognized for their hard work because Paul's in here every day diligently working on that. So that's just some of the stuff I've been working on. As far as your law on fire monthly, uh, summary or any, any questions before I move on? As far as that part.
Uh, I'm just going to continue to ask as we get closer to that date, Fourth of July, uh, San Juan, what are we doing to protect our little town for the bike rally?
Bike rally? Uh, nothing.
I, I mean, obviously we're not hosting one, but I mean, you're going to have an influx of riders coming in, more people, I would assume for Fourth of July. And so I just want to ensure that there's enough security or officers to, um,
We'll have security still with, that we contracted and the sheriff's office is going to have their dedicated deputy here.
Got it.
Um, he's working on his hours and then they have two additional deputies that are for the entire county. But if one area is obviously, um, less impacted, they're going to be cruising through town.
Okay, great.
Also reached out to the California Highway Patrol, uh, because they also have additional staffing that entire weekend. And I've offered up our community, um, uh, hall as well as city hall in case they need somewhere to stage. So then we have more law enforcement presence within our city. So I'm, I'm contacting, I'm trying to be creative, um, getting more, uh, uh, law enforcement presence within our community.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Um, yes, um, I had a question too about, I'll go in the order of your listed items. So I'm thankful that you're reaching out and being creative because it's been a long time coming for the encampment situation. This individual accept the help, but the encampment's been growing. So that's been a concern of mine. And I'm glad that you're looking at how to deal with that with the ordinance from the county. Cause I always thought that since we didn't have one and the governor has given the mandate that we, that he's need to deal with this, that that's probably the way we should go now. Um, and how much is it going to cost for this outside agency to come and tag the individuals' belongings and all that stuff?
We're working on that.
Do you have a ballpark estimate?
I don't. I know that the number that they charge the county for that river, riverbed was huge.
Yeah.
And ours is small, so I'm hoping it's.
Yeah, they had bunkers though.
Yeah.
They had a lot of trash. Yeah. So, yeah. Okay. Well, that's great. And then, uh, coordinated Fourth of July contracts. We have Kismet.
We do.
And then we have deputy, one or two?
Just one.
One, okay. Has there been any consideration or talk? Because we were to have an intergovernmental meeting today. Bar control, it was canceled at the last moment, like ours. And that, that's, uh, because we, San Juan Batista members on intergovernmental would have liked to have had that conversation and heard from the representatives from, through the, or on that committee, um, just to hear what was going on. No criticism. We just want to what's going on so that we could better plan something for, um, any consideration with you or talk about having, having a designated parking area for the bikes?
No.
So that's going to just kind of be wherever they land?
We have no official, um, event planned for any type of bikers, any of that.
No, I mean, just parking. Like, do you, would, would you consider like having a lot where they park or do you want them down Main Street? I mean, how, is there any, been any?
Nope.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Has that been a thought?
It has not. My lie. It has not.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sabathia?
Can we put the slides back up and go back a slide? Yeah. Yeah, I'm a visual person. I lose, uh, focus real fast. Uh, great news on the fleet management stuff. That's I, as we're talking about taking stuff off, I don't know how many. I think we've been talking about that since I got seated, but seeing action on that is, is great. Um, uh, nothing nice to say about this. We're being impacted, impacted by this rally that's being held. And like you've alluded to, we're not hosting anything. We didn't ask for anything. We all, you know, we all imagine that we're going to be greatly impacted. Um, and to councilmember Morris Lopez's comment, it's, it's real hard for us to react when we, we, it would have been nice of being able to sit down when things are approved, when things are planned, being neighborly with our, our, our jurisdiction so that we, like, all the things you're asking are, are great. I think it's great considerations. Great to have these conversations together before everything was, was, was kicked off and going. Um, yeah, I, I, I think I get your position, Roy. It's hard to, it's hard to plan and make concessions for an, an event that, that isn't ours, right? That's
Correct.
We're all talking about being fiscally responsible and all that. Shouldn't go spending to react to an event that's happening next door. Uh, and it's, it's hard to imagine how many people will, will overflow from, from there. But I love the fact that you're, you know, getting creative around. Um, you know, might be a spillover from the fact that it's on the holiday, right? We're already planning for the holiday.
Correct.
For increased enforcement and checking around town. Um, we talked last meeting or last official meeting. Special meetings get me confused about, uh, when we're talking about Kismet roles and responsibilities. Uh, was super encouraged about you, you know, making sure that you're going to have a pre-meeting with them so that they understand what their role and responsibilities are and what their limitations are. Um, and we've had issues in the past with, uh, them deputizing themselves or whatever, like, and just knowing that we're like, that's the last thing we need is somebody over, overstepping with, uh, a group of bikers. Um, don't imagine that ends well, but, uh, so that's good. It's exciting to see planning going on around. I think as Californians, we all get laxed around earthquakes. I don't know how long we've been talking about the big one. Uh, but it's, it's, yes, knock on all the wood. Uh, but like, for those reasons, it's great to, to be prepared and to actually do the homework so that we're not being reactionary when, when things happen. We fall back to some planning, some curriculum, some training to know how to act, um, and know how to respond to those things. That's, that's real good to see. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, yeah, super excited about the, the fleet management contract when you have a white truck, a yellow truck and a red truck. What color, what color are we today? Um, and, and what each of them mean. Um, and it was super nice to drive the, the Camry up to Sacramento. Uh, it was a very smooth ride. Uh, I, no, I didn't say that out loud. Uh, thanks for attending the, the Fourth of July rally meetings, um, in, in, uh, last meeting, I spoke a lot about cooperation and collaboration. And, um, I appreciate you attending because we are not getting cooperation or collaboration from our partners. Um, and that's sad because we are one county, one community and what one does affects us all. Um, so I appreciate that. Super excited to hear positive news on the hospital. And that's great for them attending and being a, a partner. Um, uh, everything's going to go to them. So yeah, it's, it's nice that, that they're involved as well. Way to go on that cooperation and collaboration and coordination. Um, looking forward to bullet point three and where we come up on that. Um, I'm ready to move on.
Thank you. So for the, uh,
Sorry.
You're stealing my thunder. Um, all right. The law on fire monthly summary. So as far as the sheriff's office, they reported two, uh, intoxicated people on the block and the city that were arrested, one in the one hundred block a third. Um, actually it was two females, sorry. Uh, one on the first of May, one on the tenth of May. One DUI arrest during a collision investigation at the Alameda one fifty-six, which is within city limits. One warrant arrest on McCollum Street. One, um, mental hole, mental health hold. Uh, eight traffic citations and four graffiti cases. Those graffiti cases were for the ones at the roundabout, one at the mural. So they're investigating those as we speak. We did look at the, uh, a couple of cameras and we reached out to community members see if they can, uh, see anything on their camera systems. And then fire reported three fires, um, out in the county. Fourteen medical calls, nine vehicle accidents, only one within the city. Three inspections. One was a new business, the barnyard attic, a residential solar and a weed abatement, which was a Mission Vista HOA. And then code enforcement, um, I think we talked about this last time. Our code enforcement officer has been busy studying for the building inspector exam. So he's still studying for that. Uh, but he does have five new cases ranging from buildings without permits, parking violations, zoning violations. One stop work order for illegal dwelling unit. And then fire prevention focused on several properties throughout the city. Uh, there was one here on Second Street. Can't remember the address that has since been, um, addressed by family members. Is, am I stuck?
Is there another slot?
Yes. Um, that's been addressed by family members. The property, as you're coming into town on the Alameda, the two buildings, the old JJ's, they started, um, uh, working on that as well. We, we made contact with the Realtor, um, and he's since reached out to the property owner because we did, uh, serve them with notice of a nuisance, nuisance notices to both the property on Second Street and the property at the Alameda. So we, we continue with the nuisance notices and see how much we can, you know, get them to comply. So that's, that is my monthly report. Any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Aronda?
Uh, thank you, Roy. It's always, uh, great work.
Thank you.
Just on the, on the code enforcement part, um, I'm glad you brought up the old brewery site. Um, a lot of, Roy's been educating me on a lot of this stuff. Um, this stuff doesn't happen overnight. Um, our city attorney gets involved with a bunch of stuff. I like the house on McCollum, I mean, uh, Marantz's Court. Yeah, that's, you know, just that unfortunately in the state of California, they just can't do this tomorrow. So it takes time. Um, so our code enforcement and, um, our city attorney and, and, and Roy, they're, they're, they're aware of, I would say probably ninety-five percent of the problems. It's just process. Yeah. But thank you, Roy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you for, um, the report. And I'm very happy to hear that the property owner of the former JJ's and the brewery building is actually um, doing something, but it looks like they started and then they stopped.
We noticed that as well.
So is someone going to reach out back to the attorney?
To the Realtor we have.
Yeah, okay. To restart it. Hopefully it can get done before the Fourth of July. And then also is there any fees attached to that? Is the city going after fees for that?
I don't remember. I'm sorry. I think there is, it's mentioned in the nuisance letter.
So they're
I'd have to check.
I'm hoping that it's more than a mention and it's a demand. Would that be something attorney given? Yeah. Okay.
I can report back on that.
Okay, thank you. And then just, um, one of the things with follow-through, I know you're doing a lot. You've got a lot on your plate with the fire and the Fourth of July, uh, committee meetings and all of what you're doing. But the follow-through for me is that about a, almost nine months ago, you and, um, uh, code enforcement officer, um, Soto, um, Oscar had designated the two warehouses in town as being unsafe for dwelling. But I still noticed there's like a lot of cars. It looks like a car lot in front of one of them. And I, um, had noticed that on our attorney's report for a couple of months ago. And I don't know if this is happening, the residents have refused entrance into the building again. So for me, that tells me is, is it, has it been rectified? What's the owner doing with the building? Um, are they even permitted for dwelling? I know it's going to displace people. I hate that. Um, about that, but still it's, if it's a fire hazard, it's a fire hazard and they're not allowing entrance. And how do you do that? It's a sensitive issue. And the one warehouse has a ton of cars. So as far as like a fire truck, um, pulling up to extinguish a fire, you've got like probably six or eight cars there. So for me, it's like important is designating the things, identifying, but then the follow-up. Yeah, on that. Yeah. But like I said, I, it really bothers me that if it's still deemed, you know, inhabitable, dangerous, that we're going to displace community members. And that really bothers me because the property owner should have rectified issues if we're going to work with them. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sabathia?
Uh, I just wanted to follow up, uh, on what councilmember Morris Lopez is saying. So there was a time when code enforcement had tagged a bunch of buildings. We did a bunch of things. We're waiting on legal action and things to go through. Where on that circle are we? I know there was, like,
There's been hearings.
That's, and, and that's what I, I did, kind of to, to councilmember Freels' point. I, I know that things cannot happen overnight. It sucks. Um, you know, you identify a problem. Most of us are here because we like fixing problems. It's, we identified a gap and ran for council or pursued careers to fix problems. And it sucks waiting for a problem to be, to be fixed, especially when it's And it sucks waiting for a problem to be, to be fixed, especially when it's, no offense, going through the legal muck. Uh, I'm just curious where we are on that, on that cycle.
I can answer that. Um, the three different lawsuits that we filed and served upon each of the owners of the properties. None, none, none of the owners responded in any way legally. So we have entered, uh, default judgment against each of them. Um, and the, the next step is to appoint a receiver to take action. I will complete, I'm late with my city attorney report this month. I will complete it before the end of the month for sure. Um, and hopefully the end of the week. Um, and, and update you as to each of those lawsuits and what, what the next status is. There are other things going on with the Marintas Court as well, related to the contractor who has had a default judgment for some time against the property and, um, that is actually gonna go up for a sale. Based on the mechanics lane that is being foreclosed. So, um, and I'm talking, I will talk to council about when that's gonna happen. Probably gonna happen in the next thirty days. So that, that's gonna be a good thing because a new owner will come in and clean it up.
And so when you say, we're, we're late on the reporting, not all the action. We're, we're just late on the, I don't wanna make that distinct.
I'm, I'm just telling you, I haven't reported this.
We haven't reported on it, but y'all are still, things are
We're continuing to press and it's a good, I mean, we're fortunate in some ways.
Okay.
That we haven't had a response, so we can get an automatic judgment.
So the, the default judgment doesn't have like that, that would have to come from a judge.
Okay. Especially the default judgment has been entered by the San Benito Superior Court Judge.
Okay.
Each of these cases.
Yep. Yeah. And so I guess my, my summary of what I'm hearing is, is that slow.
Slow and steady.
Frustrating that it's slow and that we, but you know, thing, things are, things are moving. We sprinted to the things that we could on our, and that we had control of within the city and then we wait.
On a, on a relative basis, the, um, these judgments have put us
Don't tell me it was fast.
A year ahead. Two years ahead. Sorry.
Thank you. Thanks for asking that question. Yeah. They have been weighing on my brain. The graffiti once again on our amazing mural. Lights, we had talked about lights with the arts council. Um, I don't know, uh, what the feasibility of that is. Um, whether it's power or solar or what, but if the underpass can get lit, um, that could deter. Um, and, and cameras in the area. Um, well done. Um, sorry, I didn't say that this earlier. Well done on procuring those three cameras, though that, that's been huge. Um, and barnyard attic? What? In where?
That's what the, uh, fire report told me.
There was a, uh, an inspection on a new business, the barnyard attic. Antique store? Uh, in the Plaza Market? Okay.
Barnyard attic.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, public comment? What? Go ahead. And, and you had something else? To share? No? Yes? Maybe? Never mind?
I did, but you called for public comments. I'll wait until after.
Okay. Michael Poncy? Thank you. Please, that's I, we have people for that. Thank you to our city clerk.
I just have a question for, uh, Public Safety Coordinator Roy Morales. He stated that he attended the countywide Fourth of July uh, rally meeting, safety meeting. He mentioned that, uh, fire hospital was there, but there was no mention of police. I'm just curious if police was there. And for the Fourth of July here in San Juan, it sounds like we're going to be reactive instead of proactive. One sheriff. Possibly CHP. And, and security. Um, also, when we talked about this a while back, uh, I mentioned maybe reaching out to State Park. I know State Park has, um, what do you say, uh, certified police officers? Maybe that might be an opportunity for us to get some more people here in town. It just really sounds reactive instead of proactive. And I don't know what's gonna happen. I won't be here. I'm gonna leave town, so keep your fingers crossed. Thank you.
We'll, we'll keep an eye on mom. City manager.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I, I needed to add a couple of things because I've forgotten to talk about the city hall. We're gonna do some renovation the end of this month. And so I'm gonna announce some closure dates and I hope I got this right, so bear with me. Sorry Liz. So, um, city hall will be undergoing improvements. This is a part of our CIP, so it's in the budget. Um, carpets will be removed and laminate floors installed um, in the chamber and in, as throughout the city hall. Um, staff cubicle spaces are gonna be updated to accommodate, uh, growing staff. Um, so city hall's gonna be closed June eighteenth, half a day will be open from nine to one. Um, June twentieth, we're gonna be, um, open a half a day, nine to one. And will be closed June twenty-third through the twenty-seventh. Um, will be open on, from the twenty-ninth to July third for utility bill paying. Um, and then ob- obviously June fourth, we're closed because it's a holiday. But then from July seventh through the thirty-first, staff will be relocated to other offices at the library and at Public Works. Um, so we will be working and available, but we will not be inside city hall. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns on that? I'm excited. I'm super excited about the new city hall. We'll have a party. Can we have a party? Sorry. Oh, it's not in the budget. We didn't budget for that. That's not in the capital improvement plan. Thank you. Reports from city council representatives to regional organizations and committees, councilmember Aranda.
Uh, attended the integrated waste, uh, meeting. Everything went well. We went over budgets. Everything looks like we're tracking, um, tracking well. Um, there was, I think there was a I can't remember if this was part of my last meeting. Um, they did report back on Earth Day and a couple of events that we, we did, uh, attend, so it went really well. Um, attended the one fifty-six ribbon cutting ceremony, which went really well. And, um, yeah, I think, I'm trying to think of anything else that I'm gonna have this, this quarter. Oh, the rainbow race. I was there. Thank you for reminding me that, that went well. Um, it's good to see everyone out and about, um, in our little town, so, uh, cuties to that. And then, um, what else? And that's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, councilmember Freels.
Um, let's see, um, I always get this wrong. Area on aging, um, yeah. Pretty good meeting, um, Angela.
Oh, Supervisor Carol?
Carol is now the, she's the, our, um, we're an advisory committee, so she's our head person, whatever. Yeah. Yeah, um, some things, a little bit of shakeup in Santa Cruz County. Um, their senior center, it sounds like it's closing. It's a, it's a it's in a school district. It's, um, so there's some issues there on the Santa Cruz County side. Um, our side, we, um, uh, three new or two new contracts, actually three. The, um, the seniors meal program is going to, um, we got the flyer up here. It's, um, somebody's kitchen.
Martha's.
Martha's Kitchen, yeah. And then, uh, two new tr- uh, transport companies. So Havonis is, is completely out. Um, as far as the the seniors, um, lunches in Hollister. Um, they use the, 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 that community center over there and, um, in the past, there's never been any charge. In the past, there's never been a, a charge for Havonis and I guess the city of Hollister now has said that they're going to charge, uh, Martha's Kitchen thirty thousand dollars a year. Um, irony to that is most of the equipment in that kitchen was purchased by the local area aging group. So we're, we're trying to help, um, help out with that. Pretty, uh, just a quick we're paired up with, uh, Santa Cruz County in the, in our aging program. Monterey County has their own that they do, and then of course Santa Clara does their own. It's, um, pretty impressive how many, how much Santa Cruz County does for their folks and we're getting much better over here in San Benito County. But that's, that's nice to see and hopefully with, uh, hopefully COG will be helping too with the transportation. I know that they last year appointed a new transportation group. And then, uh, as mentioned by our city manager, uh, we went to met our lobbyist in Sacramento and I'll probably forget a couple of things, so I'll throw it out there. Um, pretty informative. Um, Senator Laird was very, um, receiving. It was nice to be able to speak to him, the person himself, um, uh, Speaker Rivas', uh, to his aides, one we spoke to last year. Um, so they're familiar with what's going on over here. EPA had some really good, or it was the, was it EPA or was it the water? The water, yeah, resources, but, but we're in the EPA building. They've had, they had a lot of good information for us and some good, um, some good tips on some grant money and some, and some funds. And, um, so did the, what was the other water one? Water control folks, yeah. They had someone, met with the State Parks, um, as I mentioned, the gentleman from the State Parks, the the supervisor handles all, he, I think he said from from Piedmont to Monterey is his area and he was, just did not seem like he wanted to even be at that meeting, so. That was kind of a big waste of time. But, um, it was all in all worth it. Um, this is one of the, our last year lobbyist told me something. He says, you know, I have a lot of cities that I deal with and he says, you guys are kind of rare because you actually come to Sacramento and meet as opposed to waiting to get somebody to meet with you. So he says, that's, that's kind of a positive thing, so. We're, we're the, our lobbying firm is well worth the money that we spend. And as far as awards and stuff, that's all I got.
Thank you, councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes, um, I too attended the ribbon cutting on one fifty-six and Bixby Road. Yeah, uh, and that was after the Rotary Rainbow Run Race, which I participated and walked the one K. That was fun and they awarded us with some really cool, um, swag, T-shirts and medals. It was really, it was a good turnout. Um, and then the other thing I, um, attended this weekend, um, part of community spirit, um, nonpartisan. Um, there was a protest group at the juncture of one oh one and, um, the Alameda. We had just people out there that were concerned about, you know, the lack of due process. I know that's, we're being bombarded with that every day and I did my civic duty to go out there and support awareness, but we had all ages and both, um, parties, no parties, and it was pretty cool. Um, and then the other thing is I have a pending COG meeting this week. So I will report back in August since we're going dark in July. And, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sebastian.
Uh, didn't have not attended any meeting since our last official meeting that we
Thank you.
Too many special meetings. Um, but I will comment and say that it is, it was awesome to see, um, all of the community engagement and anything, I, I firmly believe in the quality and character of the people that we have here in town. And anything that gets our residents up out and into the streets has to be for a good cause. And so I appreciated seeing all that. Appreciate hearing that. You know, other members of this council are getting, getting out to Sacramento and reminding, reminding the Capitol that we're here. That's all very exciting and it's always, the, the one conference I did attend years ago, it's, it's great to see how we represent ourselves and how we hold ourselves up there and the, not just that, but the response that we give back from people is, is pretty awesome. And it's easy to feel unheard, sitting here, getting edicts and things, but when we chuck ourselves up there, it's, it's confidence inspiring to see how, how people respond to, to our presence.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, continuing on that, it's nice to have some consistency because they actually remembered us. Um, and had a lot to say. Um, Jaime Rojas and Dmitry Semenov were absolutely amazing. Um, listening to both of them speak was, um, just wonderful. And again, to have that consistency that we have when we're up there. And, uh, our official city manager to, uh, to be in front of them was super nice. Uh, Senator Laird said that he had read all up about her. It was, it was pretty cool. He had done his homework. It was nice. Um, when we spoke with, uh, Speaker Rivas's team, um, again, the same, the same group. Uh, they made it a point to say that they were going to go to the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Haven't heard back on, on the outcome of that. Um, but, uh, Senator Laird actually reinforced that at the, uh, ribbon cutting for, uh, one fifty-six. Um, so that was really nice. Um, they're, they're actually still talking about it, so we definitely made an impact. So advocacy days, the ribbon cutting at one fifty-six, um, it was nice to see, uh, Speaker Rivas down in the area. Um, and Senator Laird, um, again, uh, and Senator Laird said, uh, that he would be making a pit stop to hear uh, to a council chambers near us soon. Um, let's hope so. What else? Uh, I went to the San Juan School dedication, uh, the groundbreaking ceremony. Um, they are going from uh, the Padres to the Cougars. The students are super excited about that. Uh, the kids were, were thrilled when the Cougar got, uh, shown, but I think, uh, everybody older than the age of eighth grade was a little bit disappointed. I did the pride ceremony. Uh, it was the raising of the flag for the sixth year, um, in Hollister. Um, and all the upper electeds sent their delegates. That was nice to see. I am on the Environmental Quality Committee for, uh, California League of Cities. Um, and it was a lot of talk about, um, SEQA and uh, environmental law and regulation. Nothing pending, nothing, nothing soon coming to us. Uh, the town hall was fairly well attended, um, forty-five to fifty people. Um, uh, and, uh, people who I had not seen before getting up and asking questions to both, uh, Supervisor, uh, Cosmiki, who is the supervisor for District Two, our supervisor. Uh, and councilmember Morris Lopez and myself were there fielding questions for wow, two and a half hours, I think. It was a, there was no time limit. Uh, it was really good. It was good. Lots of good feedback. Um, lots of things to follow up on as well. Um, LAFCO, um, next meeting, everybody is dark in July, so the next meeting we are going to be talking about. Wow, senior moments. MSRs, municipal service reviews for both wastewater that Supervisor Chair, um, the Chair of LAFCO, uh, Cosmiki pulled. MSRs, Municipal Service Reviews for both wastewater that Supervisor Chair, um, the Chair of LAFCO, uh, Cosmiki pulled uh, indefinitely. Um, so they will be on the agenda in August. And so will the MSR for San Juan Bautista. Um, that's just in the beginning stages. We have not seen any uh, anything on it yet. Um, so that'll be new. Um, again, MSRs were pulled, so it's been difficult to actually get forward momentum on, on any of them. Um, uh, the Fire Protection Advisory Committee meeting. Um, after talking a lot about cooperation, collaboration and coordination was canceled um, moments before the meeting happened. And the other meeting that I was scheduled to go to was intergovernmental. Um, talking about cooperation, collaboration and coordination was canceled an hour before the meeting. Um, and these are by our um, neighboring partners. So hopefully in August, we can start resuming those and start discussing in uh, earnest the uh, Fire District and um, well, not the Fourth of July rally, but um, not sure what's coming up next on that intergovernmental meeting. Um, and those are all the committees I attended. Um, I'm sure there was a whole bunch of other stuff. Uh, city council, uh, any questions, comments or concerns from any of that for anybody? Okay, great. Moving right along, city council and staff announcements. Does anybody have anything to announce?
Other than the saddle rodeo show in Hollister this weekend.
Roy? Roy?
Yeah.
Roy?
Uh, um, geez. Right, oh. Um, well, it's that and um, to attend, I think there's the community barbecue this weekend.
Please talk a little bit louder.
The community barbecue. Yeah, so anyways, that's what I got. Uh, thank, thank you. Uh, please attend to the La Veneno Ranch.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Oh yeah, just to um, repeat what uh, Councilmember Aranda said. This weekend, there's going to be a local um, community barbecue to discuss um, a future Fiesta Rodeo. And the group that's hosting it was nice enough. You signed up and there was no fee for the tickets. Is that correct? Yeah, so I'm looking forward to going. My eighty-eight-year-old mom was excited. She wants to go, so we got tickets and we're going. And then um, as Mr. Poncy, uh, Mike announced, the Junior Giants at eight o'clock on Saturday. I will be there even though I'm a A's fan. Okay? So I will be there. All right. Thank you.
Oh, and our farmer's market. Sorry to interrupt.
Mayor Protem Sabatia?
Farmer's Market has been awesome. Emery loves the strawberries.
I love that.
Big, big, big fan. Um, see you in Cooperstown.
Guys?
Uh, it's relevant. It's national pastime.
It is.
Uh, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you to the San Francisco Giants for sponsoring the, the, the league. Super excited that they're, um, that we have our own. Um, that we are not relying on our partners for this. This is absolutely amazing. Well done to um, Michael, Caitlin, Joanna, uh, Beth. Um, I, I am so excited. Uh, Green Business, we have a mixer coming to a city hall near us July seventeen, sixteenth. Uh, I don't know, the flyers come, the flyer, we don't have the flyer yet. It's six o'clock, I think, they start. Yeah. Um, it'll actually be here. Uh, very excited about that. Uh, Mission Market opens tomorrow. Morning, eight o'clock. Um, Inaka Fusion, uh, new, new owner, um, should be opening up in July. Um, don't have a date yet. Um, opening day, the twenty-first. What? Uh, new owner? Uh, not Inaka's. Not the EOs. Sorry, not the EOs. Um, uh, and there was one other thing I had, but I can't think of it now. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. May I roll call?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Freels? Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sabatia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes, thank you all very much. Be safe, be smart. What's today? What is today?
I don't even know. I thought today was Monday.
Can you, Ashley, can we get like your report on?